It's six o'clock and I'm calling the Plenary on Zoning Commission Meeting of October 17th, 2024 to order. May I lead the game of roll call? Here.
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 Charlie Narváez.
President.
Jim Bamaras. Regina Portillo. Daniela Salapas. Adolfo G. Martinez.
Here.
Hector J. Garcia.
Here.
For the record, you have four.
Thank you.
Want to take you though that are not here?
Second. Do a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Moving on to the next agenda item is election of officers.
Chairman, I make a motion to table this a lot of the election.
Second, no motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to consider approval of minutes of regular meeting of October 3rd, 2024.
I do have a quick comment on the minutes.
Yes.
For an item that we discussed. Just give me a few. The item was on the plat that we talked about. It was a master plan. I'm sorry, I'm just looking for the... I believe it was, um, was an industrial... On industrial master plan that came in. Oh, Kilim East, I guess, um, just to amend the minutes to... Because the motion was for us to approve the item subject to the following comments. And I know we addressed a traffic safety comment number one through three. And to remove, um, of the identification of the zoning districts in the master plan. And I know the additional comment should say, and reference the uses as described in the annexation agreement. So that the master plan reference the annexation agreement uses that were identified in the annexation. So I guess we can, a motion to postpone, and so I can see this in the next meeting.
Second. We have a motion to postpone. And a second by Commissioner Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. And also let the record reflect the Commissioner Portillo is here at 6:02. Now, moving on to citizen comments, general comments. I don't have any.
Well, we don't have any.
I do see some people out here, so if we do have comments for particular ordinance items, three people for each item and then no more than three minutes per discussion, just to keep it orderly and keep it moving flowing. So let's go ahead and move on to open a public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance.
We would request that this item be moved to the end of the agenda, just so that the action items, you know, the items that require a public hearing can move forward.
Okay, so you're referring to item seven?
Eight.
Motion to move item seven, eight to the end of the meeting.
Second.
You have a motion. And a second by Commissioner Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to item seven B. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately 5.6 acres as further described by meets and bounds in attached exhibit A located at 20881 FM 1472 from AG Agricultural District to M1 Light Manufacturing District.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, we have the applicant as Ruben Transport as the owner. We have Ricardo Rodriguez as the applicant and Jose F. Cuero as the representative. Property location is approximately 5.6 acres located at 20881 FM 1472. The zone change request is an AG to an M1. The proposed use is for a trucking company where tractor trailer drivers will trade load and unload products. Letter sent for eight, we have none for and none against. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Name map. Feature land use map. And the recommendation is stop supports. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak in favor of this item? Is the applicant here today? Anyone who wish to speak against this item? Are there any questions?
Motion. Okay, so a motion to close the public hearing and go with staff recommendation.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barone.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Portillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to item seven C. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately 0.87 acres as further described by meets and bounds in attached exhibit eight located at 20889 FM 1472 from AG Agricultural District to M1 Light Manufacturing District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have the applicant as AOT Express Inc. We have, as the owner, we have Ruben Agüeza as applicant and we have Jose F. Cuero as the representative. Property location is approximately 0.87 acres located at 20889 FM 1472. Zone change request is from AG to M1. Proposed use is for a trucking company where tractor trailer drivers will trade load and unload products. Letter sent is were eight, we have none for and none against. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning map. Feature land use map. And the recommendation is stop supports. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor or against this item?
Our motion to close the public hearing and approve staff recommendation.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Portillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to item seven D. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning Lot 9, Block 274, Eastern Division located at 2010 Springfield Avenue from R3 Mixed Residential Use to B1 Limited Business District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have the applicant, Patricia Contreras, and Veronica Molina as the owner. Property location is Lot 9, Block 274, Eastern Division located at 2010 Springfield Avenue. The zone change request is R3 to B1. Proposed use is a commercial plaza. Letter sent were 31, we have none for and none against. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning map. Feature land use map. And the recommendation is stop supports. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor or against this item? Yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Hector Ruiz. I'm voting against, against the change. I'm not in favor of the changes. I like to keep it as a, as a mixed... That's it, that's it. I'm against it.
Thank you for your coming, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your coming, sir.
Buenas tardes. Soy Serapio Salinas. Estoy en contra del proposal. Queremos más información por el DIO. Okay, what are they gonna say, what's the plan? I don't know.
Gracias.
What is, question, what is gonna be built there?
What they've indicated is they want to do a commercial plaza. Of course, it's a, it's a one lot development, so it would allow for a very small commercial complex. Typically, all B1 allows would be office type uses, light commercial uses. Probably the most egregious use that B1 would allow would be a gas station, but it wouldn't be able to... You wouldn't be able to put that at that location.
It's a small area parking.
It's one lot, a very small lot.
Good afternoon, Patricia Contreras, I'm one of the owners. So the plan, I know I heard a question, what was the plan for, for this lot use? We are thinking of doing a commercial plaza like in the application says. Bringing in maybe a barber shop or an insurance company and there maybe two. It is, like you mentioned, a small lot, so maybe two, three lots, I mean, two, three businesses in there, something small.
Thank you. And there is sufficient parking as far as they were?
With the zone change, we don't...
No, I think...
The specific uses isn't identified, so we don't review for parking.
Okay.
I guess in our packet we got a, um, a zone, a zoning map? Identifying the surrounding zoning, I guess, where you sent the notifications for this zone change? Can we pull up that map? I just have a question on it to staff.
I guess, can you rewind it to the... There you go.
Right, so I guess here what's highlighted in red is the property that we're considering, right?
That's correct.
And then there's some shade of pink in it, I guess, north of it. In our, in our packet, it shows as RO as far as the zoning, north of it. But the pink kind of reflects B1 in that area, so I'm just wondering, is that RO, is that B1?
No, the pink, it's, it's hard to tell, but it is a lighter pink. It is, yes, folks, they, they, they use very little...
The RO is almost lighter, right?
Very light, almost lavender, right? So it's the RO, it is RO.
So it's zone RO?
North, west, the, just northwest of it and the lot, the block south of the proposed location is all B1. And then you see to the northeast, you'll see that also those, those are B1.
Okay, so it's not B1, it's residential office as far as it's zoning for those two lots?
Those two lots, correct. Those are RO.
Yeah, I guess the only concern, I guess, is, is really the size of that lot for a B1 zoning that could possibly go in there, you know? What is the size of that lot?
I can pull it up, what it is. I don't, I don't know that we have...
I can pull it up for you real quick, pull it up.
It is, what is it, 138 by 46, so 6,000? So in order to accommodate its setbacks, parking, maneuvering spaces, it would be a very small commercial sort of complex.
And under an RO, would she still be able to, would the owner still be able to do like barber shop insurance agency type businesses under RO?
RO is a bit more limited. It's, it's more limited to offices in particular rather than more of those commercial uses. So, um, so she wouldn't have the full list of commercial uses that'd be allowed in the B1.
I have a real quick question. Is this something that you just purchased? I saw a real estate sign for sale.
If you could just come to the front, please.
If this is something you purchased with the intent to do what you're trying to do right now?
Yes.
But the zoning does not allow...
I just purchased it about two months ago.
Okay. When you purchased it, did they tell you if it was something that you could build on or...
That it was something possible that we could do on there because of the square footage of the lot. It is something very small, so maybe about two, three shops in there, max.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff or comments? If not, what sort of action would the commission like to take?
Can you really have a motion?
No, there's no motion.
I would, I would motion to close. I go against staff recommendation. My opinion.
So the motion? That's my motion. So we have a motion by Commissioner Garcia. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Kara Schrempf at home. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Libstein? When I was...
No, sorry, again.
Against.
So, she was against?
One of them.
Against the recommendation of...
Supporting, supporting staffs.
No, she supported staffs.
The motion was not to support staff's recommendation for the zone change.
Right, thank you.
And ours is just a recommendation, the final say so is with city council. So ours is just a recommendation, but I'm sure someone from staff will fill you in as far as the motion and your next steps.
I mean, just to be clear, it is in line with the comprehensive plan and it is located along a major collector. There is 7,000 trips traveling at that location, so it is quite a high traffic area.
But I think that they should go to the council and then they make the decision. And I don't think it's a, it's a big enough lot to disturb already enabled places, this is my thoughts.
Thank you. Moving on to item seven E. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by authorizing the issuance of a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol on building, building 1G Falcon Center out of Lot 3, Block 1, Del Mar North, filing number one, located at 7718 McPherson Road, Suite 106, 2,348 square feet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have Placet Trinity Investments, LOC. As the owner, we have La Parroquia as the applicant and Carlos Valencia as the representative. Property location is building 1G Falcon Center out of Lot 3, Block 1, Del Mar North, filing number one, located at 7718 McPherson Road, Suite 106, 2,348 square feet. The zone change request is a special use permit. And the proposed use is a restaurant serving alcohol for an existing restaurant. Letter sent were 33, we have none for and none against. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning map. Feature land use map. The distance map. And the recommendation is stop supports. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak in favor or against this item?
Hola, muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Carlos Valencia. Soy chef y dueño de la Parroquia Bronchery Group. Y este, somos una bronchería. Estamos abierto de lunes a domingo de ocho a tres de la tarde. Este, somos un concepto mexicano especialmente del puerto de Veracruz. Estamos trayendo lo que es el, el sabor de Veracruz para acá. Tratando de fusionar un poco con la cultura del areo. Estamos tratando de tramitar lo que es el permiso de bebidas para sí poder dar un mejor servicio a nuestros clientes y que puedan disfrutar el mejor de nuestros alimentos. Muchas gracias, muy amable. Sí, es de ocho de la mañana a tres de la tarde. Somos una bronchería, no?
Pleasure, thank you.
Gracias, buen día.
Oh, are there any questions for the...
Just, just a quick question for staff. I know we took a measurement as far as for the distancing that was in the communication to the front door of the school, right? But shouldn't have been taken to the, I guess, the residential area instead? That's south of Del Mar? Or, yeah? I guess on Merlin, because that, that would be the nearest property. Which I think, I think it still meets its distancing, but...
I think so, but we can, we can recheck it.
I think it still meets it, though.
This is a public hearing. Anyone else wish to come up and speak in for or against this item? Are there any questions or comments? If not, what sort of action would the commission like to take on this item?
Motion to close. Public hearing and motion to go with staff recommendation.
So you have a motion by Commissioner Cantú? Second, second by Commissioner Portillo. All in favor?
I'm in favor, I'm just subject to the distant requirement, I don't know, to the subdivision. But, or does it meet it or not? I just didn't know that.
It would have to be 300 feet away, so...
Yes, it's 300, right? Yeah. Yeah, it's more than that.
It more than meets it.
But I mean, it's subject to meeting that requirement of the motion. I'm for it.
Okay, so we'll do it one more time. So all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item seven F. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately 348.2 acres located south of Beltway Parkway and west of Interstate 35 from AG Agricultural District to M1 Light Manufacturing District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have ND Acha Trust, ETAO as the owner. We have Rete Corporation as the applicant and Porras Nats Engineer as representative. Property location is approximately 348.2 acres located south of Beltway Parkway and west of Interstate 35. Zone change request is from AG to M1. The proposed use is industrial. Letter sent were six and we have none for, none against. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning map. Feature land use map. And the recommendation is stop supports. And proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Wayne has Porras Engineering. We're here to answer any questions. Wayne has supported the zone change.
Are there any questions for Mr. Nats? Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak in favor or against this item?
Motion to close and go with the staff recommendation.
They have a motion to close and support staff recommendation by Commissioner Garcia.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cantú. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to item seven G. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning Lot 3A, Block 1520, Eastern Division located at 2519 East Saunders Street from B3 Community Business District to B4 Highway Commercial District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have Jose Ramirez and Miriam Ramirez as the owner. Property location is Lot 3A, Block 1520, Eastern Division located at 2519 East Saunders Street. Zone change request is B3 to B4. Proposed use is for an emergency clinic. Letter sent were 13, we have none for and none against. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning map. Feature land use map. And the recommendation is staff does not support. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak in favor or against this item? Please come forward. Yes, just state your, state your name for the record.
My name is Miriam Ramirez.
And you're in favor or against?
I'm in favor.
In favor. Does anyone have any questions or...
Miriam, you're here to say why you're in favor and in representation of the owner, so they can know why it is, what it is that you're trying to do.
Yes, it's my, my, my parents, my father and mother lost a property and they're trying to lease, they own Taquitos Ravi, which is like one property, everything. Like he, he had us build a placita right with it and he's been trying to lease it for the past few years and it's still not been able to be leased. We have this, this, you know, proposed tenant who says they need a B4 in order for, for them to sign lease. So I'm hoping my in-laws to see if this change can be done so they can get a tenant. They've been paying full property taxes on this, this whole placita. My, my in-laws are up in their age, he's 79. And, uh, and we want to see if this is possible for them. This is supposed to be the retirement income, so...
Who is the tenant?
They're called Excellence ER. And the realtor told me that they, they know what they need. They need a B4, they will not sign the lease unless they get it.
Oh, what kind of business?
It's an emergency clinic.
Oh, emergency.
Right. It's on Saunders Street, it's close to the hospital. I mean, I, they, they say they will have a few rooms, they will have patients there for up to 48 hours if needed.
Up the block, the two, three blocks up, further up, you had that on the right hand side, next to the hospital.
They're, they're correct. If, if that is indeed the, the proposed use, because medical clinic, urgent care clinics would be allowed in the current zone. However, inpatient surgical procedures, overnight stays, that is all required a B4. So if, if that is indeed what they're proposing, the, the B4 would be required. The B4, of course, allows other uses that are dissimilar from the surrounding uses. So if they were seeking that, a conditional use permit may be the appropriate, the viable alternative.
I don't, my father-in-law, he's not gonna do a conditional use permit every time he gets a tenant. I mean, he's 79 years old. My mother-in-law, she has Alzheimer's. I mean, this is not something they're gonna be handling, you know? So the, the clinic is very specific. If we don't have a B4, we can't sign a lease, so...
I mean, you can understand that the B4 does allow for warehousing, tire shots, a lot of very intense uses that are not necessarily in line with the wider commercial uses that you see at, at that location.
Yeah, I think it's a better bet for you to go with a conditional use permit to get the recommendation, because the way you're taking it right now, you're not gonna get a recommendation because everything else that can go onto that. And, and you can take a buy and say they can do something, but being that they have the, the B, the B4, they can do something else and you all can't stop it. So I would support something if it was a conditional use permit. If not, then I, it's hard to, it's hard to, I live in that neighborhood, so I understand.
He's done Taquitos al Pastor for 45 years. He's not gonna do anything different.
I know, but whoever you lease it out to can do that.
In, in the past, there's been other, other properties who've come along Saunders who've also wanted to do B4s. And this commission and other commissions in the past have not supported B4s along Saunders. And there's specific reasons because of the traffic and the use and so forth. Also, when you change the zone to B4, you're leasing, so that lease can only be for how many years you choose to lease it. Once it leases out at a B4, anything can then go from there. So there's multiple uses that could be used. So it runs a risk for the residents of the area and it's just a way to kind of protect you as the owner and then the residents that surround the area. So that's sort of just my comment as far as the stance on the B4.
I, I understand. I mean, we're not gonna move in anybody. You know what I mean? This is, I'm protecting my, 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 my family. You know what I mean? We're very, very careful who we rent to and that's why it's been empty for that long. So I mean, we'll, you know, definitely be careful with that. I mean, it is a, when we were building the placita, we even had to go to the state because Saunders is considered a freeway. I mean, really, like B3, B4 across the street, the lady from Sony told me where there, there's an M1, which is even, she said it more aggressive than, than it before. So they're right, right across the street from us. So, you know, like, it didn't kind of, didn't make sense that there's such a big zoning across the street and there's no residents around. There's, there's nothing but businesses, placitas, 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 which is a problem because everybody has empty spaces, so we have so many people to compete against.
One, one block behind you, there's apartments.
Apartments.
Two blocks down, there's another set of apartments. There's a trailer park, there's, there's houses there, so...
All of those are leases. They're not owned by, by homeowners, so that's, you know, they're all by corporations.
The person that rent is a home for them. And we have to protect the citizens in that area. I understand who you have to protect and, and applaud you for that, but we're, we're here to protect what, just the stability of that area. So if it's not, in my case, if it's not an additional use permit, I can't support something like that.
What do you have right behind you? What is right behind that place?
It's a restaurant.
A restaurant behind us, a hotel next to us, a, a, a car wash in the corner, post office across the street, HEV. I mean, there's, there's no, you know, no noise. There's no noise. And the thing is, I mean, it's a clinic, it's not a nightclub, you know, so that's...
Thank you. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak in favor or against this item?
I think a motion to close and go with the recommendation of staff.
You have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to support staff recommendation against the zone change. And do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Badron. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Our decision is just a recommendation. We still have city council. City council is the ultimate. So our decision is a recommendation. Moving on to item seven H, amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning Lots eleven and twelve, Block eleven sixty-seven, Eastern Division, located at twenty-oh-four Bismarck Street from B-one Limited Business District to B-four Highway Commercial District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Abecan is Pedro A. Rodriguez, sorry, Arrellano and Maria Rodriguez are the owners. Property description is Lots eleven and twelve, Lot eleven sixty-seven, Eastern Division, located at two thousand and four Bismarck Street. Zone change request is from a B-one to B-four. The proposed use is a mechanic shop. Letters sent were thirty inside the two-hundred-foot, four-zero, against zero, outside two-hundred-foot, four-zero, against zero. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning overview. Future land use. Staff recommendation, staff does not support the proposed zone change. Proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak in favor or against?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make sure that I call attention. If you put the map back up, we were supposed to correct that map. That B-four that you see on that map, that is incorrect.
It's not a B-four?
It is a B-three.
B-three.
If you'll see, if you'll notice on the, there's another map in there where it does show the correct zoning. We looked at the authorizing zone and the ordinance and it is a B-three, so apologies for the incorrect map.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Yes, sir.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Antonio Rodriguez. Soy al taller de esa propiedad. Quiero cambiar esa propiedad a B-four porque yo hace dos años compré esa propiedad con intención de ubicarme ahí. Yo tengo mi negocio aquí por Market veinticinco cero dos. Ya trabajo en un taller de enderezado y pintura y eso es lo que yo quiero hacer ahí. Ya no que por ahí pago renta ahí y ya no quiero pagar renta. Quiero, el proyecto que yo tengo es poner el negocio ahí y aparte hacer una casa de pinturas, vender pintura automotriz, que eso es lo que yo hago. Mi especialidad es igualación de color y quiero el proyecto ese porque vienen cosas nuevas para el ramo de la automotriz y quiero ese proyecto.
Pero quieres vender pinturas y pintar carros ahí también?
Es un proyecto muy bueno porque va a haber trabajo para, de perdido, diez, de diez a doce personas, tanto en el taller como en el.
The taller and vendors.
Sí.
Okay. Because there's differences, those are two great differences.
Okay. The project, aquí me dice que no procede porque los límites no son suficientes. Entonces, no sé si puedo poner ahí en el mapa. El terreno que está ahí enseguida también es mi. No sé si hay alguna manera de anexarlo también para que abarque los pies que se necesitan. Él está enseguida por acá.
El veinte cero seis?
Sí.
Is one. Conditional use permit, could that be an option in what he wants to do?
I mean, it's always, always an option. He does fall within the zone that would qualify to apply for the CUP for the proposed use. And it definitely would be more likely, I hate to, you know, likely than the zone change.
More likely than the zone change?
More likely, however, definitely not guaranteed.
Right.
Not even guaranteed that we could support it.
Right. And then, and then the second comment has to be lot width?
That's correct. The B-fours require, they have dimensional standards and for B-four lots, they require the lot width. It's indicated in your zoning map. So, I mean, it's your communication. It has to have a hundred-foot width. So what it's trying to tell you is that these are residential-type blocks. They're not, they're not, they don't meet the dimensional requirements.
El proyecto ese, ahí ya hay mucha área donde ya están poniendo locales de los cuales tanto me van a servir a mí como yo les voy a servir a ellos. Ya están instalando lotes de carros ahí en esa área.
Lo que, una opción que le pudieran dar, o no sé si staff, you know, the option of a permission conditional, specifically to his business, ¿verdad? These conditions would be the hours of operation or other conditions, ¿verdad? Pero lo difícil aquí es que, a la mejor, usos que están ahí son, like they say grandfather, that have been passed for many years, para ese uso de un B-four. Pero ahorita en este mapa, no se ve otro B-four en su área, o sea, usted sería el único con un B-four sobre esa manzana.
Y se necesita un B-quattro para lo que yo quiero hacer ahí, o puede ser un B-tres?
Pueden hacer con un B, what is it, a B-one or no?
Yeah, for light mechanic work, you can do it.
No, es taller de enderezado y pintura. Mechanical, no.
It's light work.
Es taller de enderezado y pintura.
Yeah, for auto body and paint.
And the tienda.
He wouldn't be able to, if he were a B-one, he wouldn't have the option for the conditional use permit to do the auto work?
He can. He can apply for B-four uses from a B-one zone.
Se necesita para hacer B-quattro?
No.
Lo que le quieren dar como opción, no cambiarle la zona porque entonces es muy, lo generalizas.
Okay.
Le pueden, puede usted, o sea, tal vez aplicar para lo que es un permiso condicional, para lo que usted quiere hacer.
Okay.
Si pudieran aprobar eso, es una aplicación adicional a lo que usted está haciendo ahorita, pero es lo que estaríamos nosotros tal vez recomendando que usted hiciera para que pueda conducir el tipo de negocio que quiere.
Ese permiso condicional, no puedo trabajar ahí, o sí puedo trabajar?
Sí, de esa manera pudiera usted trabajar lo que usted quiere hacer. Pero se requiere hacer esa aplicación y pedir un permiso condicional para hacer usted lo que usted necesita hacer. Sin cambiarse de.
And this is a recommendation, ¿verdad?
Sí, sí, sí. Mi pregunta es, como me dijeron que también no aplicaba por el límite de la propiedad, tengo que anexar el siguiente local, ¿o no?
No.
Si lo va a usar para su negocio, yo lo incluiría.
Sí, porque me dijeron que me faltaban, no sé, ciertos pies, ¿verdad?
But that's for a B-quattro.
Okay. Okay, perfecto. Okay.
Then, quédate con el B-one. They have the permission conditional. Apply it for, and from there, they, they will approve or not approve.
Pero si, si no está, puede todavía, nosotros hacemos una recomendación así, es the city council who will take the decision.
El problema es que si voy a tener el permiso condicional, voy a invertir en él. Voy a invertir tanto en la tienda de pinturas como en el negocio y luego voy a invertir a la mejor cien, doscientos mil dólares, lo que me digas que no.
We can continue with a recommendation for yes or no too. Those are just things that we're informing you to have options, ¿verdad?
But when do they have to apply again for the conditional use?
Well, that's the thing. We should make the decision before they deny it. If the council denies it, then you have to wait, make another application. So that would be a decision that the senior had to make before he came to the council, ¿verdad? So they can make the recommendation here and he can decide if he wants to continue forward with the regulators or decide that he wants to apply for the permission of the conditional. In that case, then he would have to make another application with us.
But the question that the senior has, or say, imagine if we give him the permission.
At what time?
How many years?
I misunderstood. The, the, the regulators have all the options to put any requirement that they want. So if they want to give it permanently or can put a time, or say, normally they don't do that because they know well that there will be inversions, but that stays with them, ¿verdad? So if they give it permanently, that stays until it is removed by order. Or say, that had to comply with all the conditions that are imposed by the permission of the conditional. While that complies with those conditions, no, eh, because.
What time does it take for the permission of the conditional?
It's only three months.
Okay. In three months, you already know if they give it or not.
Sí.
I could start with the taller of enderezado, pintura, and then after, that's the least investment.
Then he would have to come to the, to the Department of Construction to ask for any permissions or take their certification of occupation.
Okay. I have to.
The best would be to not bring this to the city council, ¿verdad?
This is B-quattro. We're not just to give him options, ¿verdad? Or say.
It's that they have to reject you and then you apply. So you have to, the recommendation is, is to remove this, perdón, and apply with the, with the, with the condition of the use to make it go faster. That's the next step of the regulators.
Okay.
You understand? So you remove it, apply it again with the same B-one, with the conditional. And if you want to put the other lot in one place because you think it will be used for these purposes, then put it in one place. You will have to return it or apply it again. So remove this application as a recommendation, ¿verdad? This, without giving you any advice. This, and then you apply it again with the conditional of the, of the title.
Okay. I have to go with you there, please?
One question as an option. If he wanted, because he has the option, based on any recommendation that we make right now, you still have the option to bring this to what it is to the regulators. And if the regulators give the B-quattro, it doesn't have to do anything with the conditional use permit.
Yes.
Okay, so permit.
Although here it says that it's rejected, here it says no.
No, no, no. That, that doesn't indicate that it's rejected.
It's a process.
Okay.
That's, that's, exactly. It's a process. Or say, you still have the right of, if occasionally recommend the contrary, then you just indicate that you want to appeal and you want to continue forward with the regulators, ¿verdad? Ah, everyone has that right. So you have the right to continue with, that goes with the cases with the regulators.
But if the city council tells them no, they have to wait.
With the regulators, I can, with the regulators, I can, as you can, and suggest to them the situation that already with papers, for example, with construction of the tienda that I want to do and the taller? Or no? There just, they resolve it without me being present.
He can give a comment in the city council, ¿verdad?
Of course he can.
He can talk.
There too, ¿sí?
Well, but very important right now, the question that you just asked, Mr. Narváez, is if he proceeds with this option of continuing with the regulators. How much, let's say, in the best of the cases, they allow it. But in the worst of the cases, no, they don't allow it. How long have we lost without him making his application?
It would have to wait, ah, it would have to verify, but it's three months. It's three months. It would have to verify. It could be six. It could be six that it would have to wait.
It's too long. For that reason, I say.
With three months.
The risk is that it takes more time. And the regulator, since there are no other B-quattro, will say, well, maybe he'll agree with us. It's your right. You can wait. It's a process.
I'm going to ask another, or say, for what I want, then I don't need a B-quattro or do I need a B-quattro?
You can apply with a permission, a permission for the unit, and you can work in the B-one. And with the permission, you can do what you want to do if you have the permission.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you very much.
As long as you verify, it's three months.
Okay. Yeah. No, no, it is three months, yeah.
So, ah, we're going to get a recommendation, we're going to get a recommendation, something.
This is a public hearing, so I don't know if there's any people against this item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak in favor or against this item?
Senior, just to verify, he understands that he needs it, but he has the option to do it with a permission of the conditional. Okay.
We always, I mean, after the case, we will confer with the applicants and make sure that they understand what their options are.
So in this situation.
We make a motion to close and support staff.
Or should we postpone?
Or should we postpone? I recommend, because that will give him the option to make his decision, so to, to give a recommendation.
Then a motion, a motion to postpone this item.
Close the public hearing and postpone. Would it be ten, sir?
Suspend? No, I meant to give a recommend, like, recommend in favor or opposed, deny or approve. That way, if he, if you recommend, in favor or denial, he can decide if he wants to keep going.
Okay. I motion, oh, sorry. Do I do? I motion to go with staff, well, close the public hearing and go with staff recommendation.
Not, not to support?
Not to support.
So we have a motion of Commissioner Mathias and a second recommendation for you. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item seven I. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately twelve-point-one acres located north of FM fourteen seventy-two and east of Man United Street from A.G. Agricultural District to B-four Highway Commercial District to M-one Light Manufacturing District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have Matty Properties as the owner. We have Daniel Gomez as the representatives. Property location is approximately twelve-point-one acres located north of FM fourteen seventy-two and east of Man United Street. The zone change request is from an A.G. to a B-four. The proposed use is industrial. Letters sent for six. We have none for and none against. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning map. Future land use map. And the recommendation is staff supports. And the proposed motion.
Thank you.
To be clear, I believe the presentation should reflect the actual change, which is to M-one. It's A.G. and before to M-one.
So the both zones, both countries.
Just want to make sure that we understand it's A.G. and before to M-one. So we'll make sure to correct that.
This is a public hearing.
Good afternoon. I'm Daniel Gomez. We're in favor of this, the recommendation. And I'm here to ask, to respond to any comment that you may have.
Any questions or comments from the two of us? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak in favor or against?
Motion to close and support both of the recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Garcia and a second by Commissioner Cantu. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item seven J. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning Lot Six, Block one-oh-four, Eastern Division, located at twenty-one twenty Mier Street from R-one Single Family Residential District to R-two Multi-Family Residential District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have Luis Manuel Santos as the owner and we have Manuel Santos as the applicant representative. Property location is Lot Six, Block one-oh-four, Eastern Division, located at twenty-one twenty Mier Street. Zone change request is R-one to R-two. The proposed use is for two existing residential structures. Letters sent were eighteen. We have five against that are inside the two-hundred-foot notice and we have none for. And outside the two-hundred-foot notice, we have none for and none against. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning map. Future land use map. And the recommendation is staff does not support. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak in favor or against this item?
Hello, my name is Luis Santos and I'm the owner of the property. And I bought this property back in, back in August. So if you could please go back to the, to the map showing the, perfect. Okay, so I, I purchased this because I'm trying to, one second, let me. one second, let me. Okay, so, I bought this property because there's two houses, it's two, uh, residential properties. Uh, I plan on living in the property in the back, and, well, it's actually on the side, and, uh, and I wanna rent out the one in front, uh, I would like to live in the one in the back. So, right in front of the, of the house, uh, there is a church, and, uh, right south, uh, southeast of that, there is a school as well. And one block away, we have the, the B three, and, uh, you know, I just want to make some, make progress and make, and do things right. I, uh, I would like to live in the property behind and do the proper rezoning, that way I can, uh, uh, cause the, the, the church and the school, they're both R one at the moment, so they haven't gone through any kind of rechange, uh, zone change. And, uh, I want to be able to change it into a zone R two for, you know, to be able to, uh, rent one of the unit, one of the houses and live in the other one.
I'm just, I'm curious, um, you could still do that under an R one, why would you still wanna change it to R two? I mean, you could still live in the, in the back house and, and rent the front, what, what's the need for wanting to change to R two or the zone?
Well, um, that way, uh, that way could be, it could be, um, so you can, you can rent both.
I mean, you're the owner of the property, the two houses are already on there.
That's correct, they, these houses were built, um, what we saw in web cat is that, uh, we show that one was constructed nineteen fifty six and one was in sixty six. So, while that zone does not allow two dwellings, they are legal not conforming.
As long as it doesn't knock them down.
One hundred percent, they are, they would be respected, they would be allowed to maintain.
Un- un- unless you must get separate meters, right?
Oh, it's, uh, and it currently has two separate electric meters.
I think it has two meters, we don't know how they got the two meters, they wouldn't be able to get them today, but, they, they, they have them.
Wow.
I would, I would like to, uh,
Do it right.
Possibly be able to make that, that zone change, so that way, that way it can be a multifamily. And, uh, maybe in, in, in the future, years later, I would like to rent both out. There, there are two houses and they're completely separate and they're, they have.
All of those, those, all of those uses are, would be allowed.
Yeah, all that's already allowed.
Right, yeah, under the current zone.
Right.
So, so I could rent both units out completely separately.
The electricity is another thing, but maybe you can, if, let's say one meter was there, you can prorate that.
It seems like he has already.
I, I do have, I do have two meters, yes.
For both electricity and water?
I, I'm sorry, uh, not water, just electricity, two, uh, to, to different, electric.
Well, whatever you have now is what you could keep, you can't add another meter for water, you can't do any of those things, because this is what the, now, the difficult part about your property is that you would be the only R, what are you planning for, R two? Cause if you look at the map, it's really resi- dense and residential, right?
Yes.
So, it, it, you would be what is considered sometimes with planners a zone, a spa, uh, uh.
I took, correct, it would be a spot zone.
It would be a spot zone, right, so that's something that's not, as far as for planning purposes, right? It's something that sometimes you wanna consider, um, doing spot zoning.
Spot zoning, uh, what is that?
That's when, if you see, look at that, you know, it's all yellow?
Okay.
And then the red is what you're considering, and if you were to change that color to pink, that would be a spot around yellow.
So, the, uh, the property right in front, uh, and I have a picture of it, uh, right in front, there's a church.
It's allowed in a R one.
And, and then there's a, there's a school as well.
Also allowed in R one.
Also.
Yes.
And, um, is there a possibility to change it to, to, uh, to an R two?
I mean, it's, it's, you have every right to do it, but as far as the commissioner, from what it seems, um, R ones, I mean, R two is probably unlikely, but you have every right to apply for a zone change and, and go through the whole process.
Yeah, like we told the other applicant, we, we do recommend.
It's a recommendation, but what we're saying is the way it's, it's currently done, the way the houses are set, and you're explaining to us, you can do what you wanna do without having to change the zone.
Right.
So, it's, like I said, there's no need for the zone change, cause you can do what you wanna do, as far as renting out and living in the back house, but as far.
And, and what about renting both houses?
You can do that, cause you're the owner of the property.
But if you're gonna go through a change, what you wanna do is change it, personally, I wouldn't support that. Because it's not something you, you, you're gonna support, because you, it's, like he says, you're, it's a spot, you're trying, you're trying to change something for no reason, cause you already have, everything you're saying, you already have it in this, to change it doesn't make any sense, either, in my opinion.
The only thing that he would not be allowed to do would be a second meter for the water, which he doesn't have in the other house.
He has water.
No.
He has electricity but not water.
And, and if it's changed, I'd be able to get a second.
No, but the question is, you said you didn't have a meter, two meters for water.
I don't.
But, but you have a meter, but you have water.
Yes, but I would, I would like to have two meters.
But, but you have water serving the back house, is that right?
It's a good way.
Don't worry about another meter.
Also, these are very established neighborhoods, and there's been applicants that have come before, and as far as my stance in these neighborhoods that are established, they wanna go to R two, and, and these residents do not wanna change their, their residence, they have multi families coming in and, and uncontrolled, so.
So, when you say not have multi families in, they're gonna be two different families?
Well, it can be any type of family, rental changes everything, and you go to R two, they can, they can knock down those two buildings, they can build duplex, they can build townhomes, they can build triplexes, so, all we're trying to do is keep the integrity of the established neighborhoods and protect the residents and protect you as the owner, so, that's just my stance on, as far as the neighborhood and the areas, but like I said, you have every right to go through the process. But as it sits now with the two homes, you can do what you said you wanted to do, but it's up to you.
Okay, um.
So, I think we'll go ahead and, if, if there's anything else different, I think we can ask if there's anybody else who'd like to speak either for or against.
What would I need to do to, uh, so, so, so I could, I could rent both units out? And, and e- e- even if in the future I won't live in one of them, I could, I could rent both of them out independently to two separate families.
We'll be, we'll be happy to, to get with them.
Yeah, you can get back with them and they'll explain what it is that you need to do.
Like I said, our decision just a recommendation, so once we decide, however, the com- the commission decides, you still have to go sit, you have a choice to go through city council and then go through the process as well, and they're the final say so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, thank you for your time, this is a public hearing, anyone who wish to speak in favor or against?
Hi, good evening, my name is Monica Malanavo, I am a resident of the twenty one hundred block of Mier. I, along with my, uh.
No, no, we're, we're, I'm sorry, where would that be, like?
Twenty one twelve.
Is that?
I'm at two hu- yeah, third, third house, right in the middle.
Third house to, to.
It's, uh, the second house to the west from the.
Second house to the west, thank you.
Yes, so I, along with my neighbors, do oppose the change of the R one to R two. Um, I did sign, uh, we do have a, a signed petition, and this is all, everybody who was, uh, within the two hundred feet. Uh, one of our neighbors is not available, he's out of the state, but he did send me a text, cause he wanted his voice, uh, heard, so I am attaching this, I don't know who I can, uh, turn this into.
Did you give that to staff, and do you know how many people signed that?
I did not do a count, but maybe like, I know it's everybody on the twenty one hundred block, so it would be everybody that's two hundred feet, and then it was a.
But for signature, like, individual signatures would be?
Yes, individual signature.
Could you take a quick count maybe of how many of those you have?
Um, one, two, three, four, five, six, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, twelve. So, we are against it, um, I've lived there thirteen years, I'm, you know, one of the most recent ones I moved in. These are lifelong residents of the Heights, they've been born and raised there, some have come back, their parents built it, their houses there, and they've come back and lived here. Uh, this has been causing a lot of stress and has disturbed our peace, because our community, you know, I said community, our block was not built for multi families, you know, our streets are narrow, we have high traffic because of Mier and, and Bartlett, we have our church and our school there. So, anybody coming in from Bartlett into Mier, if you park on that street outside, that, that part, that, uh, property in question does not have adequate space to house multi families, so if you park on the street, you're making Mier that stretch of Mier, oh, one way. You know, and you're disturbing traffic, uh, another thing is, um, you know, our families, we invested in these properties. When I bought my house there, one of the things that I looked into besides safety was I did not want multi families, I didn't want apartments built around there, because I had already experienced that, I experienced the in and outs of different people, the problems that come, right? You know, and the property owners of these apartment complexes, just coming to collect rent, right? As long as they have their check, they didn't really care what was going on, so I do not want that for our, our block, you know, um, we are considerate of each other, we know our neighbors, like I said, these are long life residents, have been there forever. So, um, we are against that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And who can I turn this into?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Daniel Regal, I live in twenty one oh two Mier Street, on the opposite corner of, of the twenty one twenty, and my parents bought that house in nineteen fifty seven. And we lived there all this time. I'm sixty three years old, I've been living there for sixty three, I bought the house next door, so I live in the corner there. My parents live in the twenty one oh eight Mier Street, and I'm against it. Part of the reason is, we have a school in the area, and we have a church, very busy in the mornings during the school year, and on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, the church, all the traffic passes right there on Mier Street. So, like my neighbor said, there's no parking if they park in the street, we don't know how many people are gonna live there. There'd be two families, but how many vehicles are gonna be parking there and stuff, plus, it's a single family living that, uh, twenty one twenty Mier has two hu- not houses, one was a workshop, when the Webers lived there, and the other one was a residency. So, I believe that it should stay single family, not two family, so I'm against it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, um, anyone else who wish to say anything different? We'll leave, this will be the last comment.
Uh, Rolando Flores, I'm talking for my mom, cause she can't hear good, and she's old. Uh, she's been there since, she's eighty years old, so she's been there her whole life. And just wanna keep it single family, everybody loves each other down the street, and I ain't got much word, I ain't much good on words, but that's the bottom line.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I, yes, I do have a question for staff, and one of the photos that we pulled up, there are like, um, like a lot of white things on the. Are those bricks or are those, uh, ceramics?
Uh, what's all that?
Yeah.
They're moldings, they're moldings, cause it was like an art studio.
Yes. But why are they in the, like, in the front yard?
Yeah, so, all these molds, uh, have been taken out of the, of the other house, and, uh, I already had, I'm right now, I'm right now.
Cause that was an art studio before, and so it had the moldings in that property in the back?
Yeah, the molds were like inside of the property, and, uh, I don't know if it used to be a house before that, but there was molds inside, and I took them out, and I donated them. Uh, LCC already picked up a certain amount of them, and, uh, another, another a group of people went and picked up another set, and I'm trying to get rid of them, because they're all porcelain molds, and I donated a bunch of, uh, paint, like little, little paints and brushes, and it was a bunch of stuff that I donated. Uh, I don't have any use for any of that, and, uh, and, you know, you know, i- i- it's, it's all art stuff. And, uh, and, uh, my idea is to use both as a house, you know?
My, my concern is, it is a nuisance, and if I was a neighbor living next to you, I would not be happy with that in my front yard.
With, with, well, I, I just purchased it, and I'm getting rid of it.
I would do my best, especially if you're asking for something, um, you wanna be a good neighbor, and it's just my opinion, it's tough to, to have that in front of someone's home.
The, the, the molds?
Yeah, it's trash.
Well, it's not trash, cause LCC picked up a number of the molds.
Looks like it, and it may not be, first, I'm not an artist, so I wouldn't know, but.
Well, I, I'm, I'm really trying to get rid of them as soon as possible, and, and, and right now I already have another person to go pick them up. And, uh, and my intention is, you know, living, living in that house and then renting the other one, so that, that would be allowed, correct?
Yes, it is a little. I'd like to make a motion and close the public hearing and go with staff recommendation. I second that. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Badron to support staff recommendation, and we have a second by Commissioner Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. And just for clarification, it's to not support the zone change, that's the recommendation of the commission to council. Moving on to item seven K, amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning lot fifteen, block one, Trune subdivision unit one, located at twelve twenty Lyles Loop, from R one, single family residential district to RS residential suburban district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is Victor M. Viana Junior, owner applicant. Property description is lot fifteen, block one, Trune subdivision unit one, located at twelve twenty Lyles Loop. The zone change request is from an R one to an RS, the proposed use is a pro- uh, a single family residential, used with a detached unit. Uh, the letter sent were twenty, inside the two hundred foot radius, four zero against two, outside the two hundred radius is four zero against three. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning overview. Future land use. Staff recommendation, staff support the proposed zone change, the proposed motion, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, this is a public hearing, uh, anyone who wish to speak in favor or against this item? Is the applicant here?
Motion to close public hearing, go with staff recommendation.
You have a motion, well, this is a public hearing, so, no, no, yeah, so you closed right publicly, okay, I'm sorry, what was the motion again?
Uh, go with staff.
So, we have a motion, uh, to close public hearing and go with staff's recommendation, we have a second by Commissioner Portillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, moving on to item seven L, amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning lot four and the east of one third of lot three, block four twenty six, eastern division, as further described by meets and bounds and attached exhibit A, located at one nineteen east Saunders Street, from B three Community Business District to B four Highway Commercial District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, uh, applicant is K N E Property Investments, of C, owner Anna Karen Anales is the representative of the property, uh, description, it's located at one nineteen east Saunders, lot four, east one third of lot three, block four twenty six, eastern division, the zone change request is from a B three to a B four, and commercial use, and the proposed use is commercial, and the applicant has identified commerce, uh, used as a commercial shopping plaza. The letter sent were thirty four, four zero against zero. Background on this case, on February fifth of twenty twenty four, the city council denied the proposed zone change for B three to B four zoning district. Um, the planning zoning commission did recommend denial of this proposed zone change, and staff did not support the application. The proposed use of a commercial shopping plaza is allowed under the current existing zoning of B three, and the applicant was advised about applying for conditional use permit and has refused that CUP option. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning overview. Future land use. Staff recommendation, staff does not support the proposed zone change, I propose motion, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, this is a public hearing, anyone who wish to speak in favor or against this item?
Good evening, my name is Anna Karen Anales, owner of K N E Property Investments. I'm here to ask for your help and approval in changing the zone of one of my properties from zone three to zone four. As I said in last time, we have many plans for this property located in one eighteen Saunders, we plan to demolish what is a reception hall at the moment and build a four unit shopping center. The reason we want to change our zoning is to secure my investment and to be able to offer a wider option to our future tenants. Like I said, we plan to do this project, and by doing so, we plan to get a loan through the bank to be able to accomplish this project. And changing the zone will increase the value of the property, making it possible for us to have the loan approved for the amount we need. Now, it's a pretty big loan, and I don't want to put ourselves in debt and not have something secured before we do this. I'm aware this is a residential area, but we are located in one, in front of one of the main commercial streets in Laredo, and in the middle of the two most transited highways, like highway thirty five and highway fifty nine. I can understand your concern in accepting this change, but I'm sure this change won't affect any of our fellow neighbors nor interfere with their peace. My neighbor should be put at ease that we would be able to remove a reception hall from our neighborhood and add a more calm, healthy and commercial place. And on the contrary, we'll be bringing more businesses to our city and the removal of an old building and the addition of a new and improved shopping center in one of our most basic streets, which is Saunders Street. I humbly ask for your permission and approval for my proposition, and thank you for your time and decision.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor or against this item?
Good evening, Ms. Casa, members of the Planning and Zoning Committee. Uh, my name's Diana Hernandez, and uh, as a neighbor of the property at one, at one-nineteen East Saunders, I am concerned and do not agree with the proposed zone change. As it stands, the property is zone B three, and I don't need to tell you all, but the proposed use for the property is commercial shopping center. And uh, as they have been advised, it does not need to be changed to a B four. As B three will allow for this type of uh use. They have been advised that if one of their tenants needs a B four, then they can submit for conditional use as well. However, they insist on changing the zone to B four. Um, we've been through this before, this is not the first time we come before you, and we even went to City Council, and it did not pass at that time either. Um, B four change is not in line with the city's comprehensive plan, and as a result, uh, it may introduce businesses that are not in accordance with the city's plan for this area. Yes, there are many businesses on Saunders and in this area, however, there are still homes on both sides of this particular property. Um, B four is for major arterial uh streets, and Saunders, yes, it is a very busy street, but it, and freeways. Uh, but Saunders is a modified street, according to the city. Um, and just one thing that I had not thought about, but you mentioned, that a B four requires at least a hundred foot width, this property does not have that. I think it's more like eighty-ish in that area. Um, I welcome the proposed shopping center, however, I am concerned with the type of businesses that would be open if the zone changed, affecting the surrounding neighborhoods and the neighbors, which includes me, I'm right next door, and they know that. Their insistence on having this property uh zone changed to a B four is very concerning for several reasons, for one, one very important reason is that I the property at one-nineteen East Saunders has someone right behind them that also wanted to change a residential, R three, to a B four. And these people are acquaintances, so I imagine that this will be just a stepping stone for the property behind, which is in the neighborhood, to just say, well, we share a property line, why can't we be a B four as well? You know, it, it just opens the door, is what I'm saying. Um, I live in this area, and I care about my neighborhood, and the quality of life for my neighbors, and myself. I am not in accordance with the proposed zone change, and I just wanted to state that.
So so how far do you live from this property?
I'm next door.
And how is, it's currently reception hall, right, and then
Yes.
And there's a tacomaize there?
Tacomaize, yes.
Does there ever spill over from parking?
There has been, uh, we do have a sign, and um we posted that we will call for towing. It is posted. They have a parking lot. No, they've they've parked in my property, they have parked inside my property. She doesn't know because she doesn't live there. Okay? But I, one time I came home, and there was a
She hasn't thrown it out.
Yes, and, and she did this to me last time, and just threw me off, okay? Um, I mean, the last time
The question you just was, is there ever spill over?
Yes, there is, but we take care of it, we take care of it, don't worry about that.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Any more questions?
No.
Okay, well, thank you for your time, thank you for listening, and I hope you do the right thing. Thank you.
If you can come, just, yes, can you just come to? Now, you gotta, you have to direct the comments to us, not to the
Can I ask, um, what, um, businesses you guys are concerned about, like having them?
We, we had an item, just a few agenda items ago, also for Saunders wanting to go from a B three to B four, and the Commission did not uh request uh the zone change. What happens is, there's been plenty of people who have come before us on Saunders wanting to go to B four
Yes.
from a B three, and if you look at the map, most of Saunders, all of Saunders is B three.
I believe that there's like a tire shop across us, and it's a B four as well, and it's a tire shop. So I don't know what it was before, or why they have it before, and they, I don't know what's the difference.
So, I can't answer that?
I can address that, there's a, an auto body service located at the north-west corner of Saunders and Monterrey. Uh, it looks like that was, the zone was changed in nineteen ninety, so
So that's quite a while, though, so
Long time ago.
I'd like to, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to close a public hearing and then discussion.
Okay, so we have a motion to close public hearing, open for discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion closes.
Uh, just a quick question for staff, it mentions here in the in the comments, this same item had gone for the same zone change in February, in February.
Uh, that's correct.
And then to, in February, went to council?
Oh. I'm assuming so, yes.
And then it got denied there, the same item, and then after you get denied, is there a timeframe that the city asks of you before you can come back and apply for a zone change?
Yes, that is correct, uh, six months.
So six months, yep, after denial, you have to wait six months.
However, I think this one was one of the cases whereby council changed, they passed an ordinance to allow all the cases that had received uh a recommendation of denial uh to reapply without having to wait. Is that correct? Isn't that how it went, the ordinance? Do you remember?
It was just for that time period?
Yes, it was for the, the
Six-month time for the October, correct exact dates.
It was for the, the preceding six months, so this was one of the cases that was uh would fall into that ordinance.
Would have, but it still, it was longer than that.
It still meant, meant the, the
The timeframe.
The wait, the waiting period.
Okay. Yeah, all right, sorry, it's, 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 the public hearing is closed, public hearing is closed. Yes.
I have a question for staff.
Yes.
Do we know the exact lot width? Because on Google Maps, to me, it looks like less than a hundred feet, just like ninety-seven.
I'm seeing that nine, ninety-two, one fifty-eight. We have a survey, because there is a sort of uh they, they've subdivided um the lot to the west, so
So it's less than a hundred feet?
It's, it is less than a hundred.
So then they wouldn't qualify for the B four?
It, it doesn't meet the dimensional requirements, that's for sure.
Okay, so then, okay.
Are there any other questions or comments from Commission? What sort of action would the Commission like to take?
Go with recommendation of the city?
Second.
So we have a, a motion by Commissioner Garcia not to support the zone change, and we have a second by Commissioner Condu. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Ours is just a recommendation. Item seven M, amending the zoning ordinance map of the City of Laredo by rezoning Lots four, five, and six, Block five ninety-seven, Eastern Division, located at ten nineteen Yev Street, from B one, limited business district to B three, Community Business District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Applicant is Cristoel Rodriguez, owner applicant. Uh, property description is Lots four, five, six, Block five ninety-seven, Eastern Division, located at ten nineteen Meyer Street. Uh, the zone change request is from a B one to a B three. Uh, the proposed use, applicant has identified the proposed use as a contractor shop with limited outside storage. Letters sent were sixteen, four-zero against zero. Little background on this, applicant has been advised, the proposed so, the proposed use requires a B four zoning due to the limited outside storage. However, the applicant has also advised, uh, has been advised about applying for conditional use permit, and has refused the options of B four and a CUP. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning overview. Feature land use. Zoning regulation. This is, um, this is a, a diagram showing how the property is zoning and overlay uh for specific cases work. And staff recommendation is staff does not support the proposed zone change. Proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor or against this item?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Uh, I'm the owner of the property, and
Your name for the record?
Cristoel Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the reason that we went from a B one to B three is that this used to be a Dr. Riddle's Clinic, and this is a two-story building. Uh, the, the top floor, uh, we have a, a radio station that we just bought, that we're gonna be broadcasting from the top floor, and the bottom floor has been uh occupied by uh a construction company, David Cantú. And uh, the reason that we wanted to go to a B three is, he has some uh utility trailers, and all the parking is inside the property. Now, the other three lots next to me are B four, we're half a block away from Mercy Hospital. In the whole block, there's only one resident. The rest of them is all commercial, or business, okay? And we're only three pla, I mean, three lots away from Mercy Hospital. And that's the only reason, uh, Councilwoman Melissa Sierra Roy lives across the street from us, and she's been in the office. I have shown her all the property, and he suggested at first to do a, a B three with a, a conditional use permit. And um, I wanted to see if we can go straight with the, the B three, but uh, if nothing else, uh, um, I, I mean, we're open for anything, so.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
And there's, there's ten lots around us that are B four, you know, so, just so you can have that in mind.
So those lots that he's referring to, that are right next to him, that are B four?
They are, they are not.
They're not?
Um, they are not. We included in your packet the ordinance whereby the B four S U Z D, which is a specific use overlay. Um, we've included it in your packet, uh, the, I've lost, I've lost it. I had it, too, thank the girl. Um, here we go. So if you notice, the, it's a, it's an overlay, so the base zone is still the B one. Um, so it is not a B four, the, especially, the specific use zoning overlay allows only in those ten lots that he mentioned. It's for the sole purposes of doctors' offices and treatment facilities. So, e- even other B three uses would not be allowed in those, in those, in those lots. So, we have since uh corrected our maps to make sure that it indicates the correct overlay.
Thank you for the clarification. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor or against?
Good evening, Margarita Raisa, I'm a, I live across the street in a house that will be a hundred years old next year. The history of the, of the property that is in question here, there, there's been about three businesses in the last five years in that property, and it clearly isn't doing well, it's a commercial enterprise. Um, and my concern is that changing the zoning, uh, this radically is if this business also doesn't succeed, will open the door again to the destruction, really, the, the, it's going to tear apart the fabric of the residential district. As far as the contractor shop, um, what does that entail as far as noise and traffic? It's a very residential district. Uh, all the houses around there are rela, are very old, uh, established families that have been there for many, many years. My family has lived there for more than sixty years. Um, I wonder what it would do to the neighborhood to have trucks coming in with heavy equipment and, and, and noise at all hours of the day or night. Um, I think right now Laredo is suffering, like many cities, a big housing shortage, and instead of encouraging housing in our neighborhoods that are already very nice residential areas, you know, this would go in the opposite direction. And I hope that you all, I know the staff recommends denial, and I hope you go with a staff recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone else who wishes to speak against or favor? Mr. Rodriguez, I have a question for you. Mr. Rodriguez, I have a question. Would you, uh, would you be, I know, in the, in the packet it says that you were mentioned a possible for a conditional use permit, but you had denied wanting to go that route. Would that be something you'd consider?
Yes, now, when she mentioned about the noise, this is not a workshop. The construction is offices, that's all it is. There's no work done there. Uh, sometimes the trucks go in and out, but I'm talking about pickups, utility trailers, no heavy equipment, it's offices. That's all it is.
Okay.
And right next to me, see though, the, the three lots, those are B four, and if you look at the uh, uh, Presil district, it comes out to B four.
So, so Ms. Ms. DeRae kind of explained that it's specific use um under a B four zoning, but it's actually still considered a zoning for B one.
There's still B one, it's just a
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm, I, I guess I just wanted some clarification, if, if a conditional use permit would be something you would consider?
Yes.
And still keep the B one zone, and you'd still be able to operate your renovation, and then also the other shops that you wanted, just want to see that be a consideration?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I, I think um, we're trying to fix, uh, put in a business that it just doesn't meet this area. Uh, uh, unfortunately, this is my opinion, and I feel, uh, we got San Agustín, we got the, the Retama, I believe, east, maybe a block down. Uh, I did drive the area, it's a, a lot of residential, I didn't see a lot of commercial, I did see a daycare on Garfield. Unfortunately, you know, Mercy Hospital's there, and it is a nice sore, but when, I guess, many years ago when it wasn't, it, it fit the neighborhood. I remember a lot of doctor's offices there, probably homes that were converted to doctor's offices. So I'm even surprised that there's B one in this area. Really, it should be an R O and transition, you know, into the residential area. Uh, a lot of nice homes in this area, and uh, it's unfortunate um that this business is trying to do this in this area, or specifically in this property, because uh, because it, it is it doesn't make sense when you look at the home and, and the lot, and you have construction trucks going in and out. And the question to staff is, you know, there, there are a lot of businesses you can do in B ones. Um, the only difference between B ones and a B three, are they're very limited as well as, as far as those uses, right? One of them is a, a tire shop, tire sales, auto glass, auto repair, and pawn shops. I mean
Car lots.
And car lots. So a pawn shop is not something we want to open, not that Mr. Rodriguez would do that, and I don't think he would. And I know there was discussion, but as far as the communication that we had was, that CUPs were not going to be considered. But at the end of the day, those are some pretty heavy uses, and really those uses belong in major roadways, like McPherson's and Saunders, uh, as far as a B three. And that's why I'm saying even B ones here is something that I was very surprised about being in this area. And actually, those B fours that we're talking about, I think there were empty parking lots that were probably for spill over for the hospitals.
That's correct. They, they, it was all for medical uses, so again, the overlay only allows for medic, for offices and medical uses.
So, so in the pink area, those red spots?
All, all those red spots are
But, but they're parking lots, right?
Possibly.
No, they are, I can see it, drove by, yeah, that's what, that's what that corner is. On the corner of Hendricks and Meyer, that, that's a big parking lot. So those are my comments for that.
So what sort of action would the Commission like to take?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and go with staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion, a second by Commissioner Garcia, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item seven N. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the City of Laredo by rezoning approximately eight-point-seven acres, as further described by meets and bounds and attached exhibit A, located south of Felicity Drive and west of Quan Trovientos Road, from R one, single-family residential district, to R one B, single-family high-density district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Applicant is Ford Holdings LTD owner, Polos Nas Engineering, is the applicant and the representative. The property description is approximately eight-point-seven acres, uh, located south of Facility, Facility Drive and west of Quan Trovientos Road. Uh, the zone change request is from an R one to R one B, a proposed use is residential. Letters sent were forty, uh, four-zero against one. Location view. Area view. Uh, street view. Zone change signage. Zoning overview. Feature land use. Staff recommendations Staff recommendations? Staff support of proposed zone change? Both motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wants to speak in favor or against?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Wayne, as Pollos Engineering, we're in support of the zone change. We're here to answer any questions for you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Nance?
No.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone? Yes?
Good evening. My name is Monalviar Llano. I live right... It's basically my backyard. I vote against. I vote for a single-family residential. The reason is because, as most of you imagine, have passed by Cuatro Vientos. It gets very busy, and it's by the months it gets busy. And just imagine for it to be a high-density. I mean, it's an accident waiting to happen.
So it's still gonna be single-family? The proposed use is single-family. It's just smaller lots, but it is gonna be still single-family homes. It's not multifamily, it's not...
High-density, that's it.
So it's not apartments or anything like that?
No, no, no. No, it's still gonna be single-family lots, just a smaller scale.
Will that devalue my property?
No. Your property goes value based on comparables to your home.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Eduardo Flores. Yeah, I'm just... Estaba nada más que preocupado, ¿verdad? Si esto iba a ser como a little lot, like I put some trailer or something like that, porque me va a devalue my property. Pero, pues si va a ser la misma casa, pues está bien. I mean, muchos vecinos como que nos reunimos. Y we agreed to build some park over there or something like that because there's a lot of kids, and there's no park for the kids. That it is playing on the road, on the street. Todos los días, los carros pasan bien speeding. Y el único park que tenemos para el south queda... ¿Cómo se llama la por medio de la parte? El Independes Park creo que se llama. So there's no more park over there. So there's a lot of houses and everything. There's nothing to do with the kids. Todo están siempre en la calle, pues. Que tengamos en consideración si pueden tener eso in the future.
Yeah, ahorita.
Okay, gracias.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Stephanie Wadres here. I live behind or across from the lot. Right now, the lot is empty, but it's been, I guess, used to throw trash. There used to be a ranch there. There used to be cows and everything around the streets. Right now, it's just abandoned. I know I have like a piece from my backyard that I'm missing, I think like five feet, because there's like a sewer under. So we went to, I guess, the owner of the Cuatro Vientos, and they told us that nobody knows what they're gonna build there. We're missing part of our land because it's completely not, I guess, established. We weren't able to build our fence properly the way we wanted to. So we just kind of, we wanted to know what they're planning on building. They just built a middle school, Ricardo Molina. There's a lot of traffic. They recently just put speed bumps. But on Egido and Bianca, it's a lot of traffic congestion in the mornings. We need line, like something, a four-way stop or something, you know, because the lines are like backed up. They just added, I guess, a stop sign in the corner of Ricardo Molina. But I believe if they bring more properties, I mean, it will be good, but we just need more, I guess, structure as far as like traffic, if that's what they're planning on doing.
Are you up Felicity Drive or what street are you on?
I'm on Gabriela. I'm literally like on the corner. So I'm on Gabriela Street.
Oh, I see, okay.
Gabriela and I don't know...
So your property must be open undeveloped.
Yes, so this is my property. The lot is like really, it's my backyard, just like they mentioned. So we're literally across from it. And it's abandoned. Nobody has done anything to it. The bushes, there's trees. The pictures that just added, they're not updated. It's really outgrown there, so...
So this is part of the process? So once they get the zone changed, then they're going for the development phases? So maybe the engineer can maybe shed some light?
Yeah.
And put the residents at ease?
I want to clarify what you all already have stated. Yes, it is gonna be single-family residential areas with lots and houses on them. We did present at the last planning and zoning meeting, we did present the preliminary plaque, and we agreed with all the comments that staff had. So it's another subdivision that's very similar to the ones that we have. The same developer did an R1B right up on Bianca, closer to Egido, and very nice homes. And so they will be standard lots, as you pointed out, Mr. Chairman. And I want to reassure the people that are coming up that it's not trailers, it's not apartments, it's something like that.
Do you have the preliminary plaque with you?
No, I apologize. I didn't, you know, that was last week. I didn't bring that one, but it's gonna look like...
Does staff have it, Manny?
These.
I was looking for it, and this is not the one that we included, so apologies.
Or maybe you can pull it up in the last agenda as far as the agenda for the last meeting?
Oh, maybe so, yeah, we can do that.
Just so we... I want to make sure the neighbors know what this commission approved as far as the plaque, because the plaque's already approved, right? Do you remember how many lots they were going?
I don't have... I would be lying. I'd be guessing at number.
So just to reassure while we look for the people that are here in regards to this item, there are single-family homes, very similar to the homes that you currently live in. Just asking from what their current zoning was, which would be a larger lot to a slightly smaller lot, but the same type of homes. So it's gonna be single-family. And as far as for your property where it's undeveloped, that will begin to get developed now. As far as the issues that have happened to your homes, you can definitely call 311 or Code Enforcement, and they can maybe address the issue or kind of direct you to the proper people to kind of help that situation.
Yeah, the property you're missing on your property line, that whoever did, you need to go back to the people that sold you property. And hey, what happened here?
We actually went... We have an HOA too as well. So we went with the HOA. HOA wasn't able to tell us anything. They were like, go back to whoever sold your house. We went to Armadillo. Armadillo didn't know. So they were like, that's the problem of whoever owns, I guess, that lot. No, but nobody has been able to tell us.
Nobody's gonna take responsibility.
And nobody has cleaned or anything, so we have reported that...
There's rocks, there's bushes, there's trash. And basically, we went to get the...
You just state your name for the record.
Francisco Wadres. I'm her husband. We actually went to get the, you know, the lot size and everything with the city. And they told us, we don't know who's the owner of that property. And we're like, well, there has to be someone who's owner of that, you know, because they have to clean it. Whenever they cleaned those lots, there was a bunch of rocks and stuff. They just throw it back there. And none of that, just the thing that there's like an arroyo, like for the water to go under our house. So basically, all that trash and rocks, it, you know, the water won't go through, you know?
Make up a call, call 311.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
And what about the traffic as well? Like, we can see that...
He's gonna explain.
Okay.
Mr. Nance is gonna...
This, as you can see on the board, this is a subdivision. I just want to reassure people, these are all lots that will have homes on them, single-family homes. And it's very similar to what's further up Bianca. I think the best thing we could do is get construction in there and get single-family lots. It'll take care of the trash problem because people will be living there. But I just wanted to reassure you that it wasn't trailers, it's not apartments. It's a...
Yeah, but we're concerned as well as traffic. Because Bianca's the only one that, you know, comes out of all those faces. There's like two faces where they live. So basically, traffic and then the school as well. So for us, there's gonna be more traffic and more...
So what happens is there'll be a process that they'll be getting with planning and zoning, and they'll go over all the logistics of traffic and ins and outs and all that. So all that gets...
They have to provide that.
Provide that, so...
City's traffic.
So we just want to let the neighbors know, this is the plaque that was submitted and approved by the commission.
Yeah, if you can see Loop 20 right there, so basically you cannot go...
Right. Well, unfortunately, this is a zone case, right? So this is what we're gonna be looking at. We only make a recommendation to council. That's a plaque that's been looked at, so you guys have an idea of what's happening in your area. And that's it as far as from our end.
Really quick, because we have to move on to the agenda items.
I'm Monalviar Llano. If this gets approved, can I request a brick wall? Because it's gonna be different smaller lots to bigger lots where we live?
I... That, I can't.
That's something maybe neighbors can talk to the developer about to help you a lot. But that's something between you guys that we can maybe...
Is that all of you that live around there, that you have ideas for parks, you have issues with traffic, and now perhaps privacy. You have your representative, your council member, Gilbert González, who you can reach out to with your concerns so that he can remain sort of active and advocate for you on these issues. Just so you keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have... Can we have some sort of action on this item? Or if there's no other questions, I'm not sure, from commission?
I can hear if that was for and against, right, really?
Yeah, we think we've heard enough.
Okay. What should we close and go with the recommendation of staff?
Do we have a motion to close public hearing? Go with staff's recommendation by Commissioner García? Second, by Commissioner Casades? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
I just have a quick question for staff now that we've taken action on that. It seems like sometimes the plaques are coming in before the zoning. Is there any way we can encourage engineers to do the zoning prior to the plating? Like that, it can give us a better idea of the process of what's gonna be developed rather than that?
I mean, they understand that if they don't get the zoning, that they would have to start again. So I would think that that is enough encouragement for them, that they're exposing themselves to work.
But it's also difficult for us because as we're approving a plaque, right? And then there are issues like here where some programmers may say that there's a smaller lot or bigger lot or apartments rather. And then although the master plan and the plaque show it, I think it's encouraged, it would be something that we can encourage our engineers to do is to secure the zoning so like there's no issues.
I mean, that's usually, I mean, I think that the development community understands that, you know, securing a zoning first is usually the, I guess, the more...
Yeah.
The preferred path, but of course, they're entitled.
Yeah. Or maybe we just have to keep that in mind.
Okay. Moving on to item 7O. Amending the zoning ordinance map as Laredo by rezoning approximately four acres as further described by meets and bounds in attached Exhibit A, located north of Manzanillo Street and west of Cuatro Vientos Road from R1 Single Family District to R2 Multi Family District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have Summers Family Partnership as the owner. We have Pollos Nets Engineering as applicant representative. Property location is approximately 4.0 acres, located north of Manzanillo Street and west of Cuatro Vientos Road. The zone change request is from R2 to... I'm sorry. Zone change request is from R1 to R2. The proposed use is residential. Letter sent for 41. Enter the 200 feet. We have none for and none against. Alter the 200 feet. We have four against and none for. Location view? Area view? Street view? Zone change signage? Zoning map? Futurales map? And the proposed motion is staff supports. And the, I'm sorry, the proposed recommendation is staff supports and the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is public hearing. Mr. Nance?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we're glad that staff does support it. We're here to support it as well. We're here to answer any questions, all my...
Wait. Staffs?
Yeah.
Communicators does not support.
Let me back up a little bit. When we originally looked at this, we were very concerned about the location of the R2 being at the farthest end of the neighborhood. So what our biggest concern was access. So we got together with the applicant, and we confirmed with Textop that Textop will allow access to this location directly from the highway. If you notice on the map, there are already an apron that Textop has already built with acceleration and deceleration lanes. So this location will front Cuatro Vientos and pre-provided direct access to Cuatro Vientos. So this increased density will not be traveling through the neighborhood. It'll have a road around it to buffer it from the R1B that's being proposed just north of it. So for those reasons, we were able to support it.
Yes, thank you. As a matter of fact, adding an access point with XL/DC lanes, the highway was designed for this entrance. And there's already the access point. And we have the, we shared with staff the deed that indicates that. And so if anything, I believe that this, I'm certain that this access point will improve ingress and egress to the subdivisions in the area, not the other way around. And so I think this will be, you know, a win-win for the whole area.
So the staff chain...
We do support. I did want to share also that we did receive a number of opposing, but we were quite surprised that they did not want houses. They wanted commercial. That they were very much in support of... They wanted more, they didn't want more houses. They didn't want more dwelling units. They wanted commercial there. So that was, we were surprised by that. But for the most part, that's what necesitamos las lineras, tiendas de servicio, comercial center, comercial. So...
Now you know what to build next.
Well, darn it, no. The developer has insisted on this one.
Do you know how many dwelling units you're considering building here?
Again, I'm gonna answer the question that you asked. We actually presented our preliminary plaque at the last meeting, and the layout was there. And to answer your question, a lot of times we pull the trigger and we release them. The zoning requires a month of advertising, and so it hits... It hits just the way, whenever we drop it, the preliminary plaques go in two weeks. The zonings, because of advertising requirements, end up being a month later. That's why...
And they just have to wait, right? Because here's the difference. If these neighbors were not in favor of having 1,000 dwelling units next to them, and you guys are coming in with that, and we approve that plaque, then we're coming in for the zoning. We're gonna be, you know, we understand you've already spent, you've already done your engineering, you've already did your plaque. But a bunch of neighbors are now upset that you've got 1,000 dwelling units coming in.
It came in handy, just that the last one, though, because I was happy to have that preliminary plaque laid out to share with them that, hey, no, it's gonna be regular, it's gonna be regular lots. It is a risk that we do understand, but I wanted to let you know it wasn't a strategy. It's just the timing of the way that zoning and preliminary plaques, they just end up getting here faster. It's not something that we're, you know, trying to do on purpose. And that's what I wanted to share with you.
Well, that's, but if you can, that would help because it puts us in a tougher position, you know, because you want to listen to the neighbors. But at the same time, we understand the cost of development. Plus, we've already done the approval of the plaque.
Understood. Sometimes it just does turn out this way. All right.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is there any question, Mr. Nance?
I know.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor or against? Sort of action would the commission like to take? Oh, yes, sir.
Yes, good evening. My name is Milton Contreras. And I was actually one of the persons that actually submitted a comment on there. And so even though I don't live like 300 or 200 feet away from that area, it is concerning because I had been talking to someone in planning, and we really just want to know what it is that they're trying to build there, right? I think that's more like transparency because what if we do get the zone changed and something else comes forward and it's not what, you know, they said?[1708.53] So that was one of the reasons why I, you know, talked to my neighbors about it and said, you know what? We need to kind of look more into detail, what is it that they're trying to build? Because personally, like I said, I don't live around three hundred feet away from that area, but we wouldn't want like apartments or, or just something like that would affect that neighborhood just because Independence Park is there and there's just so much traffic. I don't think it would be more resourceful to actually build more than what we need in that area. And yes, I did, you know, support maybe more commercial than residential and apartments, but like I said, I don't, I'm not sure exactly what is it that they're going to build there. I don't know if that's something that you all may know or not, that's.
So, yeah, the engineer, Mr. Nance, will address that question.
I'd be happy to answer that. So with the developers, the intention is to build the townhomes that are, that are set, that are settled, that are sold, the ones that you've seen with the shared wall design, that they require an R two. And that's what would be selling there, but from the curb, it's still essentially a house.
Uh, to be clear for townhouses, they'll need a P and D.
And they'll, they'll need to, and we'll be in front of this commission again.
Okay. So, so it would be townhomes. So in order for the townhomes, they do need to do the zone change. As far as traffic and your question about traffic, that was addressed, that TechStop is going to have a access going out to Cuatro Vientos and not into the neighborhood. So those are the two things that we'll discuss and clarify by the questions from the commission and by the engineer.
All right, and I believe that it's ninety and ninety-one, I'm not sure if that's another, like.
What's the next case?
The next case, yes. It's the same thing where like opposing it because again, there's not really so much transparency as to why the change or what's going to be built in that area. And like I said, I think the person who I was talking to in planning department, they, they would ask, what were the changes or why the changes? There really wasn't like too much information.
And that's what these meetings are for, is for you to come get the information and then your opinion also, you know, helps the commission in some of these decisions that we make. And then of course, the engineer or the applicant also clarifies what their intentions are.
And I'm sure the staff that you're talking to give you the information, as much information they have.
Correct. No, yes, sir, and.
Not trying to hold it off.
No, 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 no.
That's all they know.
No, and I'm not trying to say that, no, they've been very helpful, they've been very courteous. They emailed me, they even emailed me like a sheet of Excel where we see what, you know. So they've been super transparent, it's just, I guess, when they're trying to talk to the developer, whoever they're trying to get these stuff from, they really don't give that much information.
We usually don't get the information also until, sometimes we'll have it and sometimes we don't, but.
Right, so just really quick, sorry to interrupt you, sir. So I know they're saying townhouses, but later on, can that change? Like they say, oh, I want to build apartments, can that change or is that just?
No, once, once these large developments go up, they go up in this state as they are.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
What sort of action?
Motion to close and go with the recommendation of staff.
Do you have a motion and a second by Commissioner Cantu, all in favor?
Yes. But to support.
Support staff, yes, a motion by Commissioner Garcia to support staff and a second by Commissioner Cantu. All in favor? Against, motion carries. Moving on to item seven P, yes. You just have, I think he should connect his pens there and everything, so. Seven P. Amending the zoning ordinance map as elevated by rezoning approximately eleven point nine acres as further described by meets and bounds and attached exhibit A located north of Manzanillo Street and west of Cuatro Vientos Road from R one, single family residential district to R one B, single family high density residential districts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have Summers Family Partnership as the owner and Portis Nets Engineering as applicant representative. Property location is approximately eleven point nine acres located north of Manzanillo Street and west of Cuatro Vientos Road. Zone change request is R one to R one B. Proposed use is for residential. Letter sent for seventy-nine, we have, inside the two hundred feet, there is none for, none against. Outside two hundred feet, there is none for but three against. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning map. Feature land use map. And the recommendation is staff supports and the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, Mr. Nance?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. This is the adjacent property, it's owned for an R one B. And we're here to answer any questions, it's the same situation. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, anyone who wish to speak in favor or against?
Good evening again, Milton Contreras. And again, opposing, again, we're not really sure, R one B. I'm not really familiar with the coding, maybe I just need to do my own research, right? But how would that affect my neighborhood or the neighborhood where I live in? That's what's a little concerning. Again, we don't have that much information to ask what is going to be built in that area. So that's the reason why I'm here.
Mr. Chairman, the R one B, it only allows for single family.
Right, so these will be single family homes, smaller lots and as far as per square feet. And it doesn't affect your property or, because your property goes based on comparable of a home comparable to yours.
Okay.
So this is just what he was intending to do, what the developer was intending to do was for larger lots, now he's going just to smaller lots.
Okay, and just another clarification, will there be like some type of map just so we can kind of get an idea of how things are going to be built or like what, what the type of resources people will be coming in and out? Anything like that, just so that we're more aware of how things are going to start looking like, like for the future?
Mr. Nance, sir.
Because I know that there's an access road on there somewhere.
They'll have a map, the pad.
Yeah, I think what we could do, if you'd like, we might look into a call tomorrow and we can guide you online how to look at the plat, the preliminary plat for those R one Bs. And then we'll have that available on our website, we'd be more happy to help you with that tomorrow.
It's off the record, right?
It's off the record, yeah, it's on the website.
I suggest you do some reading on it and you're able to get the computer and everything you're asking is actually already in there, where you could look at plat, you could look at designs, you could look at what they're, what they're, what they're proposing, because that's what we see ourselves, we get online.
But is that like something that they already have on the website that we can see?
As they go.
As they go.
Okay.
It gets on there.
Oh, okay, awesome. Because the last time.
It could be changing.
Right.
It's, but it's still the same thing.
Because the last time I checked, I only saw the, like the GIS Laredo map, that's the only thing I see. I don't really see much of what, like, like the ins and outs of what they plan on bringing into that area. That's what I want to see more of.
Their, their, their plats of the properties, what kind of homes, that some of them post them, but as they go on. So they got to get permission on it before, so it's just, it's a, it's a process, it's always going on.
Maybe they would have a demo, like so we can kind of see.
There's a map on the item that was proposed before already with the lots. So just go to the minutes or go to the, the planning and zoning.
Okay.
And go to this, this item that you just went up, on the one before, scroll down, you'll see the map of the.
Is it, it's on the Dropbox or?
It's on the website.
If you just, we'll.
Yeah.
We'll be happy to, we'll be happy to take your.
Because you can learn some other things than that, that's what I'm done. I'll probably, hey, we're going to find.
Yeah, no, this is like, honestly, this is my first time, my first rodeo this and I'm honestly just learning and going about it, so. And thank you so much for the transparency.
That's a good thing, you spread it to your neighbors.
Yeah, you're right, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you.
If there's no other questions or comments?
No questions, motion to close public hearing and support of the zone change.
Do you have a motion by Commissioner Martinez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gonzalez, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to item seven Q. Amending the zoning ordinance map with a safer rate by rezoning lot five, block one, D and J, Alexander Phase fifteen, Alexander Crossing Plaza, lot five, block one, and lot five, block two, located at seventy-five oh five Raymond Chandler Drive from B three, Community Business District and B one Limited Business District from R one B, Single Family High Density District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have Claudia J. Martinez Piones as the owner. We have Premier Engineering as applicant and we have Armando Guerra as representative. Property location, it is lot five, block one, D and J, Alexander Phase fifteen, Alexander Crossing, Crossing Plaza, lot five, block one, and lot five, block two, located at seventy-five oh five Raymond Chandler Drive. Zone change request is B three and B one to R one B. Proposed use is residential. Letter sent for forty-three, we have none for and none against. Location view. Area view. Zone change signage. Street view. Zoning map. Feature land use map. And the recommendation is staff supports and the proposed motion.
Thank you, this is a public hearing, anyone who wish to speak in favor?
Good afternoon, my name is Christina Gutiérrez with Premier Engineering, if you have any questions.
Any questions? No questions. Thank you, this is a public hearing.
Yeah, my name is Joel Holschlag and one of the guys that lives around the neighborhood there. Now, when I first moved in there, all that stuff was zone residential. And then miraculously, once they expanded university to Bartlett, they start selling land, which is normal, especially acre off Bartlett, not a problem with that. But then you zone all this stuff to business area. All right, so went for residential to business. Now they're asking for it to go back to a business, to build a high density populated residential area, to build these smaller homes. So you sit here, you deplete A, resources, y'all complain about water down here right now, water restrictions, you're building that many more homes. University is a highly traveled street already, without additional houses going there. And you want to take the city code, which mandated seven thousand four hundred fifty square foot lots, if I believe, and cut them in half on average, now how far, how small these lots going to be? So there you go, you're going to build garden homes again, which they already finished. And then at the end of the street in front of that, the Cristobal, they built apartments down there, they're going in right now, I don't know who's on those. So you have a street, these streets are built for single family dwellings, yes, R one B is a single family dwelling. Are these houses going to have garages on them like the other ones?
You can direct the questions towards us, please.
Well, are these houses going to have garages on them like the other ones? Because it does state R one B, this was supposed to be a private, semi-private neighborhood with custom homes, which obviously people get greedy, sell out, want their stuff, I understand, that's the life, that's capitalism at its greatest. But you're going to create that much more traffic flow coming out of Thomas Harris, by the street where I live on. Are you going to put a stoplight there? Because you're going to have, how many houses they plan on building with this land?
That information we don't have, this is his own, his own case, so right now they're just requesting the zone, the zone change.
So we need all that information before it even goes forward that much more. Because we need to know how much more traffic flow is going to be going out of this area. It's already heavily congested, it's already a cut through street. People go from Casa Verdi, cut through there, get the Bartlett, wherever direction you turn from. I am highly against this for that reason. If it is owned for a normal residential sized lot of seven thousand four hundred fifty square feet, which is standard city Laredo mandate, not a problem. But you want to cut it in half? You want to go to high density population, they already built two sections there, first garden homes and now these apartments going up. You know, you have that many more people going to be there, traveling those roads. The roads aren't meant for it, you have that much more congestion, you're going to wind up turning it into freaking Saunders Street where you have stoplight after stoplight after stoplight after stoplight, just for people to get out of the neighborhood. And that's pathetic. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, anyone else who wish to speak in favor or against? Are there any questions for the engineer or?
Just to clarify, it's just kind of like, it's going to be like Cristobal, but since it's not going to, how do you say, like, it's not going to meet the standard criteria for the street, more than, more likely the street is going to end up, you know, being where Raymond Chandler, so it's more of a private thing. So I don't really think it's going to affect traffic, if anything, it's going to just make it a little bit more accessible, you know, before the business. Because right now, the zoning that it is, it could be like a bar or something. So it's really going to affect like the, the properties, you know, around the area. So right now, it's going to be more of a benefit, if anything.
And when it comes to issues of traffic, that is addressed between you and planning and zoning department during the master planning and the one-stop shop, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so just to address your correction, your concern about traffic, all that's looked at. Even fire looks at exits and entrances, all that is taken into consideration when it's the number of lots for the subdivision and all that's taken into consideration. So unfortunately, this is his own case, they're coming in with the development. Yes, development changes, it's just the nature of economy. And if, if staff is supporting the zone change, they take into consideration other, other things as well.
Because I already see the decision going down the block on the night, right, you guys re-vote, everybody made a decision to move forward, you won't have to go to the next stop. You're going to have that many more cars parked on the street because you create smaller lots, there is no park. You create congestion, even on the streets, I'll just return.
Yeah.
They want some to come to the mic.
Mr. Chairman, the, maybe something, the R one B does require three parking spaces versus your regular residential lots, which only require two. So it does, it does, it does agree that, you know, that because of the smaller lots, there might be park, on-street parking, so that's why the increased parking is required onsite.
When you look at the ones they're already built, they don't fit that criteria and that's one of the next ones going there, it's going to be the same thing, there's going to be no parking. Once again, the streets are going to get that much more congested, even though it's not a major artery like university. Same thing's going to happen again. You can't even put a bar there, like she said, only because it's a residential area and want to fly. So even I know that.
Unfortunately, the costs are just so high that a lot of developers are going to smaller houses because the cost is just.
It's actually pretty shitty, I understand why it's driven that way. But you guys got to smarter about this, and that's what I want to say.
Thank you.
I'm welcome.
Yes.
Question for staff, how many notifications were sent out?
Forty-three.
How many responded? Or against or in favor?
Updated, none.
So none, out of the forty-three notifications, none were?
And we have one person here.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Are there any questions for staff?
Is there anyone here from traffic, because I was going to ask a question about traffic?
No.
No, I don't believe anybody from traffic is here.
All right, thank you.
What sort of action would the commission like to take?
Motion to close and support staff recommendation.
Do you have a motion by Commissioner Garcia? Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cantu, all in favor? Against, motion carries. Moving on to review and consideration of the following master plan. Item eight A, review of the revision of Santa Elena subdivision master plan, detentes residential, commercial, and multifamily. The purpose of this revision is to renumber a portion of the commercial, commercial phase twelve to commercial phase fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, applicant is H A P O Holdings, LTD, engineers, Portis Nets Engineering. Proposed use is residential, multifamily, commercial. As a proposed zoning for this master plan development is A G, R one M H, R one A, R one B, M B one. Location view. Area view. Provide master plan. Staff comments, planning, traffic safety, post-motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Nance?
Mr. Chairman, yes, we agree with all staff comments, we're here to support this item.
Any questions, Mr. Nance? Or staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
What sort of action would the commission like to take? Another motion?
Motion to approve, so we'll use the staff comments.
Do you have a motion by Commissioner Borden? Second by Commissioner Cantu, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to consideration of the following preliminary plaques and preliminary replays. Item nine A, preliminary consideration of the plat of Santa Elena subdivision, phase twelve, detent is commercial.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have the applicant H A P O Holdings, LTD, engineers, Portis Nets Engineering. Proposed use is commercial, zoning for this one lot is B one. Location view. Area view. Proposed plat. Staff comments, planning. And the proposed motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Wayne Nance, Portis Engineering, same area, preliminary plat for that corner. We agree with all the staff comments and we're here to answer any questions.
Any questions for?
I have a question for staff. Question for staff, so in these types of situations where, like, we're undergoing as a city, like, an emergency situation, we don't necessarily have people from Water and Utilities looking at these maybe? How do we know that this is being reviewed by Water and Utilities Department? And that they have no comments?
Well, they, they don't have comments at this time, however, this is the first step, that's what's preliminary, it's the first step to get them through the door, so they can start evaluating their construction plans. So when they start doing that, that's when they're going to take, utilities will get, take into account all the calculations on the water demands and traffic will look at how the accesses will be. In this particular case, we did see that their lot does have a fifty-foot wide access, he's been off to one side to help alleviate the traffic demands. But that'll be evaluated at the one-stop-shop process. So they have, they can get to one-stop-shop without this, this is the, this is the way that, this opens the door for them. So that's when, even though there might not be comments from these departments here, they will make sure that they comply with the ordinance and all the requirements at that phase.
They know, okay.
I had the same question last meeting, because they had a bunch of comments. And when it's, when they're not here, it's very difficult for us to make a decision, but. They're not here yet, but.
I think we had made recommendations, right, for someone from the department to be present, if they could, right?
Yes, that is correct, and we did, we did send along that, that request.
Okay.
Hey, you could tell what the request was.
The response was, they're not here.
You missed that.
Well, now they're doing something else.
So, if there's no other questions, what sort of action would the commission like to take?
Motion.
Motion to approve staff recommendation. Do you have a motion by Commissioner Martinez? Second by Commissioner Cantu, all in favor? Against, motion carries. Moving on to item nine B. Preliminary consideration of the replat at lot fourteen, lot three. Preliminary consideration of replat of lot fourteen, lot three, Copper Creek subdivision, phase four, into lot fourteen A, block three, Copper Creek subdivision. Phase four, and the granting of a variance to reduce the front yard building setback line from twenty feet to nineteen feet. Pursuant to section twenty-four dot seventy-seven dot two. Six of the Laredo land development code, the tent is residential.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, we have, um, every top's applicant, engineers top site civil group, A L C. Proposed use is residential, the zoning for this lot is R one A. Location view. Area view. Current plant, plat. Proposed replat. Staff comments, planning. And the proposed motion.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commission, Ricardo Villarreal, top site civil group.
Uh, we concur with staff's comments, uh, here to answer any questions.
I just did have a question with staff, you know, I don't think I've come, looked at a, a pl- a plat or a replat for a variance on a front yard. Unless, um, but I know we do have a board of adjustment, and I know they do grant variances for setbacks. So I, I was wondering why the board of adjustment, and I'm just thinking about expenses that sometimes these folks have to make.
There was a change.
Well, I, I can, I can address that.
Yeah.
Um, you're correct, the board of adjustment does have the authority to grant variances in cases of hardship. However, in this case, this was self-imposed, they, they have built into the setback, so they become ineligible. The, the application for the variance must come before, right, before the construction happens in order to be eligible, and there has to be a hardship. So there has to be something unique and peculiar about the lot that precludes a reasonable use, in this case, there, there, there is no such thing. And, uh, because the construction has already happened, they are ineligible to proceed to the board of adjustment. Um, so luckily, the board, the planning and zoning commission does have the authority to grant variances to the front and rear yard setbacks.
But there's a, there's a, there's a, board of adjustment can also, if there were a hardship and it didn't, it was.
If it meant all the eligibility criteria, they do have the authority to grant variances, uh, in cases where it's not a self-imposed, um, situation or scenario. And it does meet that hardship, meaning that there is no reasonable use.
I have a question, but in the ordinance, it doesn't have anything about being self-imposed or before, it just.
It has to be, uh, it, it, well, we have our legal person that gave us our.
Yeah, no, definitely, so, so we've. You kinda have to piece together different pieces of our land development code, and, you know, the way that our office interprets it, if you read the spirit and intent of, of the code, it's to promote. Um, legal construction, right, and that's coming before with your construction plans, asking for the variance, because you know that you're gonna need that variance, you're gonna have to build into it. It's not meant to be, uh, uh, a backup safety, and as, oh, we screwed up, or we didn't do this, oh, now we're gonna come and ask for the variance. So when you piece together, you know, we piece together several, the several pieces of the, of the land development code, um, you know, again, I think, you know, the spirit and intent is to, is to promote legal construction. And doing it, yeah, you know, from, you know, getting that variance prior to construction, and that, that's the way that, that our office has interpreted, that's the way our planning department, um, interprets it as well. Uh, so that, that's our position on the matter, but again, you know, this, this commission has the, the authority to. And, and the reason I ask is, two. Two bodies that can actually grant a variance, right, but two completely different processes, and I think this type of process should stay away from the one-stop-shop process. Because here, we have to go through the one-stop-shop, we have to provide maps, we have to do this, and I completely understand, I mean. It, it's all semantics, right, so, you know, um. Reasonable cases, this is actually very peculiar, that somebody builds in a setback. Uh, if, if I go back and I get all the permits in the City of Laredo and the five hundred that were given last year, right? There might be a couple that were a mistake, either by whatever, and, and, and they are mistakes, and, and here the reasonability is that, obviously, they're not gonna knock down a house that's too. You know, to move it eight inches, right? So I think there was some, and, and this is more on the history end, right, Vanessa, this is, um. I know the board of justice had granted all these before, this was the first one I did, my main concern here is, now this project here has to go through one-stop-shop. And has to go through all this stuff, and, and that's where I think maybe a, maybe a shorter process on, on an amending plat or something like that. Maybe can be considered in this scenario, I don't mind coming to the P and Z board, because to me, it's, it's the same, it's more, if we go in amending or administrative. Um, once the commission approves it, you know, tomorrow we can go record this plat without having to go through the whole rigorous, uh, you know, uh, that, that's, that's, that's. That's a long process for this. And, and, and this commission at the last, I don't know, I don't try to recall if it was his own case or something staff had recommended, but it didn't meet the. Whether the length or the, or the width of the lot by a foot, um, to meet the requirement, but we still went ahead and. Went with the recommendation from staff, which was to approve, even though they were off a foot. Here, you know, it's tough, because a property comes in, they do the right thing, they measure from the street to the front, and then they build this home, and they're off by a foot. And, you know, it's difficult to have the public have to go through, uh, this whole process of a replat. Uh, when there is a board that does consider variances, and I understand the city's determining. How that, uh, how it's going to be considered, but this type of situation, I feel, should be considered, because it does help, uh, the community to be able to get this process done. But, you know, that's just my opinion. I'm, I'm, I'm good out of the way to talk about that, I'm good out of the way, it's just, it, it's a, it's a. Four, it could, it can go up to a four-to-five-month process, when it could be, hopefully, a thirty-day process. Now, it's hard to say, hey, there was an error there, that, it's an error, not caused by the city, not caused by the commission, not caused by, by anything, but in this case, I think. Um, I think it was seven inches, right, versus seven feet, I, I think that error, in, in retrospect, was. You know, this is something where we're not gonna knock down the house, I'm hoping, we're not gonna have to knock it down, so, anyway, uh, uh.
Thank you.
It's good, it's good, no problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll give it back.
There's no other questions from, uh?
No questions, alright.
Can we have some sort of?
A motion to approve subject to the staff comments.
We have a motion to approve subject comments by Commissioner Martinez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cantu, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. There are no objections by commission or by staff to hear items ten A, or moving to consideration of all final plaids and final replats, to hear items ten A through ten D. We have a motion by Commissioner Portillo.
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Martinez, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Now, can we have, um, some sort of action on items ten A through ten D?
Motion to approve.
You have a motion? You have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garcia? And a second by Commissioner Cantu, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, uh, can we read those into record? Please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, for the record, agenda item ten A, uh, applicant is Dante Garza, engineer, Daniel Garza Engineering P C. Oh, I'm sorry, um, I'm mute to flags, or mute to reading flags. So, uh, let me go ahead and read the, the, go ahead, the agenda item. Ten A is a final consideration of all carriers, a distribution previously named Mines Row Plaid, intent is, um, industrial. Uh, ten B is final consideration of the replat of lot five, block one, north, Laredo Industrial Park, phase. Four into lot A and five B, block one, north Laredo Industrial Park, phase four, and intent is industrial. Um, ten C, a final consideration of the plat, uh, B G subdivision, intent is commercial. Ten D, uh, final consideration of the replat of lot fifteen, block five, San Carlos subdivision, phase one, into lot fifteen A, fifteen B, block five, San Carlos subdivision, phase one, intent is residential. Thank you.
Uh, moving on to consideration of the extensions of following final plaids and final replats, we have a consideration of a six-month extension to the final plat approval of Village South subdivision phase three. The tent is residential, this request is to extend the scheduled expiration date from December second, twenty twenty-four to June second, twenty twenty-five. Uh, the proposed action is approval. Um, can we have some sort of motion on that?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Portillo.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Martinez, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, um, we also had.
Motion to open up seven A.
Seven A.
Uh, motion to, uh, open public hearing, recommendation of an ordinance, item seven A. Which is, um, amending the city of Laredo land development code, section twenty-four dot seventy-seven dot one, entitled dimensional standards. To amend the minimum lot requir- area requirements for duplex, and appendix A by amending the duplex in the list of definitions, and providing that the ordinance shall be cumulative. Providing for severability clause, and providing for the publication and effective date.
Um, we're getting there.
Alright.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we're, we're gonna go. Yes.
Through quite a few slides. I guess, uh, let me, I, I'll guess I'll start, uh, as, as we are all, we are all aware, affordability. Housing affordability is, is an issue that is facing our nation as a whole. Um, you know, planners, uh, the city in general is always seeking ways to, you know, strengthen our code and thereby provide more affordable alternatives. To our development community, as well as our community. Um, we've had various parties approach, um, you know, management as well as staff, you know, to thoroughly look into how can we. Um, address these issues, and this is something that we've, we've looked at, um, and I guess I'll, 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 uh, let them do the presentation, and then we, we can discuss.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, um, background stakeholders have approached the city of Laredo with concerns regarding introduction of density requirements for duplexes. Um, going on to the next one, the current definition, uh, right now states that duplex shall mean a single building or structure designed to contain two separate living units. With facilities for living, sleeping, cooking, eating, as per Laredo land development code, appendix A. The proposed definitions would be that we would be amending the duplex definition as duplex horizontal, identifying that it's a single building of, um, or structure designed to contain two separate doing, uh. Living units side by side, uh, with facilities for living, sleeping, cooking, and eating located on a single lot. The, um, definition that is also being added into the Laredo land development code is, uh, du- um, duplex vertical, which would be single building or structure designed to contain two separate living, living units. Stacked with facilities for living, sleeping, cooking, eating, and located on a single lot. Um, the minimum lot area, uh, we, uh, um, there has been proposed minimum lot area requirements for duplexes, uh, duplex horizontals, um. Right now, the, the dimensional standards do say that. The duplex horizontal minimum will stay as the minimum lot area requirement of six thousand square feet in the zones R two, R three, R O, A E, B one, B three, and CBD zoning districts. The proposed minimum lot areas requirements for duplex, um, that are vertical, uh, we, um, are considering the section of twenty-four dot seventy-seven dot one dimensional standards for multifamily residential slash duplex vertical. Minimum lot area requirements, and that states that the minimum lot area shall be a thousand square feet, a thousand two hundred square feet per dwelling unit plus four hundred square feet. For a second and each additional bedroom in the zones R two, R three, R O, R S M, A E, B one, B three, and CBD zoning districts. Here's the dimensional standards chart, where, uh, we will be amending in the Laredo land development code. These are the potential benefits by amending the minimum lot area requirements for duplexes, it may allow following potential benefits, affordability, better use of land. High-density residential uses are encouraged, provide a greater opportunity for info development. It aligns with comprehensive plan, therefore, the proposal change, uh, amendment aligns with the comprehensive plan, as it still may create more density and provide info opportunities. Here an example of the differences between, uh, the duplexes, so, uh, on the left side, my side, left side. Um, horizontal duplexes shown as side by side, and the vertical duplexes are shown as stacked. Here are some example of horizontal duplexes of what they look like side by side. And these are examples of vertical duplexes where they're stacked. And I'll propose a motion, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the, the proposed amendment does not, uh, seek to widen where duplexes would be allowed, however, it would just allow duplexes, vertical duplexes, rather, it'll create that category. And reduce the, the lot area requirement for those, uh, vertical duplexes. Um, so, we chose to, to mimic or to echo the same density requirements that you'll see in your multifamily. So the zones where the duplexes will be allowed are exactly the same, they are not being changed in any way, the only difference that's happening here is that. For vertical duplexes, you will be allowed, instead of having to have three thousand square foot per the dwelling unit, or six thousand feet lot, uh. In your complete lot where you're gonna put it, you'll, it'll be reduced to that, uh, what is it, sixteen hundred square foot for your single-family one-bedroom unit. The, all the setbacks remain the same, parking requirements remain the same, everything remains, the zoning where duplexes will be allowed remains the same. The only difference is for vertical duplexes, you'll have those reduced, uh, lot area requirements.
The parking would still remain the same?
Parking remains the same.
And what are you doing? Go ahead. Just, how many cars are allowed in with it?
For, uh, it, it, they're considered single-family dwelling units, so they would require to have two, however, because they're not a commercial, they're not multifamily, they can have the, the, what is it, head-in parking.
Is there visitor required parking?
I believe not, I'd have to check, but I think that applies with multifamily.
Because my only concern is that, I mean, you don't see households with just two cars anymore, I mean, most households have three, four cars.
Agreed.
It's just the overflow of, of having, now you're going to smaller lots, and still the same parking requirements. Um. I don't know, I mean, that's just my thought.
It's not necessarily the case that the lot is smaller, it's that you would be able to put more units on the same size lot. Right?
Yeah.
So, and they still would need to accommodate their parking, so just because the use is allowed, they still need to make sure that they have enough maneuvering space. And parking for the, the number of dwelling units that they're proposing.
And who enforces that, because it's pretty much, if you.
Well, when the design comes along.
In neighborhoods that are, that are like this, it's because every house, every house has, as you say, three, four, five, five cars, two with the parking, not three on the street.
That's, that is correct, um, however, the. The, the, actually, the ordinance is moving towards less requirements of parking. Um, if you'll, around the country, what you're seeing is cities moving away from minimums. They're moving away from, you know, Austin removed all their parking requirements, uh, we were just talking Miami, so they're actually moving towards removing minimums. Um, so, we, we do.
More square feet for construction versus, I guess, faces.
Yeah, vehicle. Well, they have, like, proper public transportation, so, you can get away with not everybody having cars.
Mass transit systems, the walk, walking, biking, I mean, we just don't, we don't have that here, but, yeah, yes, it's a public hearing, so.
Ricardo Villarreal is a concerned citizen. I do have a question on, I'm a, I'm a product of duplex in college, so I lived there two years, two and a half years, in Bryan College Station. So I'm very familiar with this, and I'm actually glad that we're taking a step forward to, to kind of being a little more duplex-friendly in Laredo. Um, mainly with our university getting bigger, and, um, just expanding that, that. Multi- multifamily slash residential, but I, I do wanna see if we can look into something, or at least tighten the dimensions. A six thousand square foot lot for a duplex is actually a very big lot. Um, when, when we're talking about a duplex, um, it's very hard that a four-bedroom duplex is gonna be built. Um, even a three-bedroom duplex, and when you're talking about a three-bedroom duplex, you're still at nine hundred, a thousand, a thousand one hundred square feet. Like you see in an apartment building. I'm also a product of Sibolo Crossing, uh, I lived in a three bedroom there, uh, eleven hundred, I believe. So when you combine both sides, you're usually at. The intent for duplex, at least in design, cause then you start getting non-efficient is um. Pretty much the size of a house, right, twenty two hundred to twenty four hundred and you actually split the house in half. Um, the way we had it back then was, um, because the building eliminates two side setbacks. You're basically adding, you know, ten feet by the depth of the house, which could be, you know. Thirty, forty, fifty feet and you're starting to add three, four hundred square feet now, but wh- what the plan was back then was, um. There was a big driveway in the front, right, and so the driveway basically was. Was wider and it fit four cars, sometimes five, depending on on how wide it was. But it's basically like the duplex had its own little personal parking lot in there, um, but. After looking at it and actually being part of some plans for uh, hopefully doing duplexes in the future. These lots will probably be a little bit shorter because you're looking at, you know, again, a duplex not having a. You know, twenty foot depth wide yard and if we go six thousand square foot, uh, six thousand square foot, uh. Size lots, you're looking at a a small building, but with a huge yard. Right, so then they start coming in as inefficient because that land is too expensive. I know we don't wanna look at it, I don't mind, like, in my opinion, the lot probably should be a little bit wider with a smaller depth to allow for more parking in the front. So that we can stack parking in the front setbacks, use that twenty five foot or twenty foot setback. To park cars, because that's the intent, and if you look at a duplex subdivision, right? You're gonna see, you know, uh, the duplexes and every duplex in the front is gonna have a big wide concrete driveway.
Yeah, we 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 do anticipate that the design would change of the lot.
Just and just to look at that, because it's six thousand square foot lot, it 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 is a, in my opinion, a big lot. Um, and maybe if we do lower it, just make sure that we have the dimensional standards so that, you know, we don't wanna have a. Five thousand forty five hundred square foot lot, but make it wide enough so that it can accom- accommodate that parking. If you do put a parking requirement, it forces us as designers to actually make them wider and put the parking there, so. It kind of fixes itself, so, um, just as an idea and y'all can always call me whenever, right? And I'll show you exactly where that that duplex scenario is and and maybe we can mirror something like that.
More parking, less yard or or less grass with safe water, the the whole. Whole scenario.
It's tough, because what with that type of design, you would hope that builders build the way they're supposed to. But sometimes that slab was supposed to have two spaces, that slab ends up getting a little shorter and those, that's how cars end up in the. In the street, it's because the city needs to make sure that those driveways are.
We should also push for the tandem garages, like B and B does that, you have one in front of the other. You have space to do two, but you're not parking the street. That's a dog.
I don't know that, uh, we could require, require the type of, you know, the type of garage, uh, for duplexes, we don't really do.
I'm just saying like, it's kind of like something that we can suggest to builders, like in the south, there's no garages and everybody's parked in the street and it's a huge issue. So there's different types of garages that we can be using, so we're not having to park out on the street.
But can't you, you you can't you, uh, you can set the the the. The the size of a garage, if you're gonna do a minimum of, because a minimum at least is gonna fit a car.
Provide a garage, what they have to provide is parking spaces, right, so they have to provide onsite enough space. For the two cars that are required, so garage is not re- is not a requirement.
No, but if they decide to put in garage, you can put a standard of garage, so it's actually a garage and they can.
They could do, you know, the.
People put a garage, then one, two, and then just use it as a storage.
Typical parking space is nine by eighteen, so garage, uh, you would have to have, I would assume at least ten, ten feet. Uh, to be able to get in there, maybe eleven, um, and then depending on how how long. You know, you can put it stacked or just one, but you do have to provide the two spaces, whether with a garage or not.
I have a question, first off, um, uh, do we have an update on recode and the time that I why this is coming up?
We have been in uh, for the past. Um, six months, something like that, for about about six months. Staff has been meeting weekly with all the departments, they selected a committee. Um, so all the departments that enforced the land development code and subdivision ordinance. Um, they sent representatives to our meeting, we met weekly with them to review the latest iteration of recode. Um, and we have, um, I think we're one, one, I think one. Uh, session away from finishing our complete review of the latest iteration of recode and, um. Uh, we've just been talking to the consultants this week, letting them know that we'll be sending along our comments to them. Their next step is they are supposed to be reaching out to management, that was part of their, um. I guess next steps that they've 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 mentioned to us that they want to do, they wanna reach out to management and review the project with them and. Uh, discuss where they wanna go from here.
But this would be, this is just separate.
No, this is, this is gonna go into a current code.
Yeah.
So this was just presentation, there's not action being asked.
Oh, yes, yes, please, we we, yes, we would like, uh, it it is on for, um. It should be on for public hearing and uh, we would like a recommendation.
Okay.
I'm I'm then, I don't know if there's anyone else in favor against, but I know Rick already spoke, um, in favor, so I think we're good.
No, that's what I heard, he was in favor, you know?
You're in favor, can you just tweak some of the like dimensional stuff, right? So.
You wanted to tweak the six thousand square feet of the horizontal.
We're not, we're not in favor of moving that yet, because it's on par with the rest of our R one B. Um, the three thousand square foot per dwelling unit, um, especially if there was a move to subdivide. They would at least be able to meet that R one B, uh, lot area requirement, so we're. We're not ready to go there yet, but we're we're ready to move on this.
And the reason I'm saying is we deal with this all the time, a six thousand square foot lot, the width, the width of a six thousand square foot lot can be fifty, fifty five feet. You know, divided by nine, you're not gonna have enough parking spaces in front and so now you're gonna have a really deep lot. And to make a duplex, you're not gonna make a duplex eighteen hundred square feet or two thousand square feet and have a four thousand square foot. Building there with a big depth, uh, backyard and so, uh. That's six thousand, to get the efficiency there, it's gonna be a minimum size width by the depth, that's gonna be longer. And so when you try to put a driveway there, you're not, even shared driveways and a wide driveway, you're not gonna have enough there. To put the parking, so that's gonna force the parking on the street, so that's why I'm saying. We need to look at it now because if we're doing it, might as well try to make it fit for for every different scenario. Or at least expand it to to have multiple tasks here and allow us to put four parking spots in the front. And that's why it's more of a, when we do the design here, it's, uh, we look at this and we're like, there there's, there's no way that.
I'm sorry, so I I'm trying, I'm trying to follow, so you're asking to, for all the lots, the. For the lots that were duplex or the zones where the duplexes are allowed, you're asking to widen the lot?
So so, I it's because we're looking at it kind of, well, the way I'm seeing it, we're looking at kind of like.
Because I mean, you can like the lots, you don't have to.
Like it's it's not so, I'm looking at it as a duplex development, right? I'm coming in here and have ten acres and a client wants to do loop duplexes and so you have a street full of duplexes. The way I'm reading this, it's like, oh, somebody just wants to come and rezone a lot to put duplexes. But this is expanded to where now there's a duplex development and because then I'm not gonna put six thousand square foot. Lots when a developer can go in there and put almost twice as many lots, right? So to expand the developers wanting to do duplex developments. That lot size would have to come down.
What we're looking at is more infill, where we have subdivided lots that don't meet that six thousand. That they wanna do duplexes, they have the zone, but they don't have the lottery requirement, so that is what this thing is pointed at. Is is encouraging, encouraging that infill.
Yeah, it's more of a like a scenario for an individual and not a developer.
Yeah, we've, yeah, we've had a, uh, a number of folks come forward, you know, and especially the existing.
Like the eastern western division?
Yeah, eastern and western, they've subdivided, you know, it's been subdivided to death, um, they don't meet that that. That six, the three thousand per dwelling unit, um, requirement. And so they wanna build vertically, um, so they.
It's more for a vertical.
Yeah, it is, it is for vertical duplexes.
Cause the side by side is never gonna.
That's absolutely correct, that's, right now, that's, this is not aimed at side by side, this is just for the vertical.
It's a little messy.
You know, well, we had to define the the horizontal because it's just duplexes right now.
Understandable, okay, well, maybe in the future.
Yeah, to do list, definitely.
To do list, but no, I I think it makes sense, I think Vanessa, lots in.
Thank you.
Lots are scarce right now, I think, you know, and um, I think people are gonna kinda have now forced to look into. Our eastern doa- western division and other areas and maybe, you know, start. You know, and which is good, you know, you wanna redevelop certain areas, infrastructure, right?
Come up numerous.
I know we looked at the R one Bs and reducing the lot length, right, of of R one Bs in order to do those corner lots.
Correct.
And now we got these duplexes and I think it's it's encouraging for for some of these older areas to to give a new look. So close the public hearing and recommend, uh, approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barone, and a second by Commissioner Portillo, all in favor? Against motion carries, um, do we have any director's comments before we adjourn, that's been a little lengthy meeting tonight?
Uh, yeah, uh, well, I could share that we had a town hall meeting on the uh, Clark Boulevard overlay. Uh, at the Haynes Rick Center and we had, um, we had a good amount of people show up. So we were very encouraged that we were able to present and answer questions and address, uh, their concerns. So that item will be going forward, uh, at the, I wanna say the November fourth council meeting. So anybody that wants to show up and participate, um, that will be the meeting to go to.
All right.
Um, ju- ju- just a a quick, uh, update on, um, I know we've been trying to meet with the Parks Board and I know somebody from Parks, so thank you for being here. And Fire always is here too, uh, but. You know, our our, one of the meetings, the one of the first meetings we went to Vanessa, it was, um. It was interesting, we we met, uh, some of the subcommittee that we've done for planning, met with the Parks Board, City Parks Board. Uh, appointees and we kinda tried to discuss and look at the ordinance, but, um, you know, I I'm kind of would would think. That we would hope that the Parks Board and maybe the development community can meet. And then they kinda discuss and look at it and once that's done, then it seemed like we kinda jumped straight to planning and zoning to get it to council. And it it just seemed like, um, and maybe they had heard it, I don't know, I can't speak for the Parks Board, but it seemed like. They were kinda reviewing it for the first time as well, or looking at it, so if that's the case, I would recommend maybe that. They kinda look at it, get with the development community, oversee it, kinda hash things out and of course invite. The planning commission to go, but but I think that would be kind of the first step to try to do, um, and then. Pass it over to the to the commission.
Um, another parks planner is here, I not- I noticed that they sent out that the subcommittee was gonna be meeting, can you? On the twenty third, so, um.
So I may, I may make that, uh, just let the rest of the commission know, just kinda give you guys an update on our subcommittee that we've kinda formed. But it seemed that way, so I think a good idea would be maybe Parks Board, Parks, developers, hash it out and then kinda head this way, okay?
If there's no other comments, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, second by Commissioner Martinez, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries.